I've called the roll.
So, Council Committee Member Solario?
Present.
Council Committee Member Villegas?
Present.
Okay, we can begin the meeting.
Very good, and as we continue to go through the agenda, we'll allow staff members presenting the items to introduce themselves then. Also, for later in the occasion, as members of the public may want to speak on any particular item, make sure you speak into the regular mic. This meeting is being recorded, and it's being livestreamed in audio. Our first item on the agenda is public comments. I do have three speaker cards so far. Most of them are for items later in the agenda. We do have one general comment from Mr. Chris Schmidt. If you could please step forward, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm here representing the Winter Village Neighborhood Associations. If I remember correctly, this used to be called the NICE Committee Meeting, Neighborhood Improvement and Code Enforcement, so I'm glad we're putting an emphasis back on the neighborhoods. I wanted to give you a sampling of what happened in my neighborhood this last weekend. I took, went around, took pictures, and I want to give you, if you guys want to look, there were six "We Buy Used Car" signs posted in my neighborhood. There were three houses having, selling food to fundraise, and there were these signs all over my neighborhood. My neighbors were calling me saying, "Are we having garage sale weekend?" I said, "No." What happens is people will sell food to raise money. Because parking is limited, they either park in front of people's driveways, or they double park for like fifteen, twenty minutes. There were six TVs illegally dumped in the parkways in my two neighborhoods. There were numerous commercial vehicles. My understanding is, commercial vehicles, based on this pamphlet the city gave out, are not allowed to be parked overnight, or more than two hours in a neighborhood. There were two Safelite Auto Repairs, numerous stake bed trucks, two Durham School Buses. There were numerous houses where cars were parked on the, in front of the front door or on the front yard. One car was a Honda Accord, was parked on their driveway, and all four tires were stolen. It was sitting on rocks. The last one is a house that I've reported for the last six months. The people living in the house are operating an unlicensed auto mechanic. He's been doing it for so long, he's been trying to get the permit parking removed because his clients keep getting tickets. Last time I checked with code enforcement, they had issued their fourth violation for a thousand dollars, and it continues. The reason I'm bringing these things up is, when you look at them individually, they seem very minor, but the quality of life in our neighborhood has gone down. My neighborhood is R1, single-family residential. All these commercial activities are happening, and might as well be M1, light industrial. When we call on the weekend, code enforcement's closed, so we call the police. We all know we're understaffed. Police officer drives by, sees a bunch of people cooking food, they think it's a family event, they drive on. We need code enforcement on the weekend. Not every weekend, maybe alternate weekends, to address these commercial issues that happen on the weekend. So, once again, I'd really appreciate if you look at the photos that I've, to kind of show you what's happening in our neighborhood on a weekend, every weekend. We spend thirty to forty-five minutes at every single one of my Neighborhood Association meetings, talking about these quality of life issues, and nothing seems to be changing. So, again, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Those issues are important, but they are not on our agenda for today, so we can't take any actions or speak much to them, but we do appreciate you bringing your concerns forward, and they will continue to enlighten the committee members up here. With that, since there are no other speaking cards for public comment, we're going to go to our first main agenda item, which is item number one, election of a chair and vice chair. I'd like to nominate our new council member, Juan Villegas, as vice chair of the committee. Would you accept?
I accept.
Very good. And any nominations for chair?
I nominate Councilmember Solario for the chair.
Thank you. So, we have a nomination for chair and vice chair, and so let's just consider that a All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have both councilmembers Solario and Councilmember Villegas voting to elect Councilmember Juan Villegas as vice chair, and Jose Solario and myself as chair. Next, we're going to go to the bylaws. Do we have any staff reports on the bylaws? I think they generally should be fine for now. We do need to update the name of the committee, but other than that, at least for now, they look, they continue to look appropriate. Any other comments from the staff?
Yes, Councilmember Solario, Tamara Begosian from the City Attorney's Office. Article 5, Meeting, Section A, talks about the regular meeting and the, and the time and date of the meetings. It also states that the meeting shall take place at the Police Community Room. That needs to be revised because of the capabilities of this room with the audio video and access to the public. We would like to have that changed.
Okay, those appear fine to me. Any thoughts on that, Councilmember Villegas, or are they fine with you as well?
They're fine.
Very good. So, for now, we will consider those as part of the update of the bylaws in addition to the name change. Again, the committee name used to be Council Committee on Public Safety and Neighborhood Improvement. We have, as a council, modified that name to the Public Safety, Code Enforcement, and Neighborhood Empowerment Committee. So, we will consider those changes that have been verbalized, so I move to approve the bylaws with the changes suggested. Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, that item passes. Next item is review and approval of the proposed schedule. If staff can present the proposed schedule, that would be fantastic.
The proposed schedule, option number one, would be quarterly, second Tuesday at 5:30, and the dates would be May 9th, July 11th, September 12th, and November 14th. And option two, proposed schedule, would be quarterly, the fourth Tuesday at 5:30 PM, and the dates on that would be May 23rd, July 25th, September 26th, and November 28th.
Very good. They are generally of very similar formats, but option was, option one is the second Tuesday of the month versus the fourth Tuesday of the month, as well as it allows us to, again, meet earlier than later. So, I tend to prefer option one, because that would get us going quicker on these items. But Councilmember Villegas, I'm not sure if you have any, any thoughts at this time?
No, I think that sounds fine.
Okay. So, I move that we approve option one of the proposed schedule, meaning that our next meetings for this year would be May 9th, September, no, May 9th, July 11th, September 12th, and November 14th. So, that seems to be a good schedule, and we can always update that down the road as well. If there are any public comments on this, which there may be, if you could step forward, so you could be on the mic? Yes, sure.
Considering the state of affairs in the city, the homeless issues, public safety issues, the lack of resources in our parks, I'm concerned about four meetings a year. I just, it doesn't seem like we're putting much emphasis on public safety, code enforcement, or neighborhood empowerment when we meet four times a year. Would there be any thought or consideration of meeting at least bi-monthly until we could wrangle some of these issues into a manageable state of affairs?
You know, I think that is a good point, and you know, the committee members here did want to meet sooner than later, which is why we are meeting today rather than later in the month. And I think this can be a good core schedule, but there probably will be the need to add some additional special meetings, rat-hawk meetings, given that we, that this committee has really not met on a consistent basis this past year. So, we will keep your comments into account and keep you all posted, and maybe at our next meeting as well, bring that back up. But those points are well taken. Any other comments, Councilmember Villegas, on the schedule, or thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that maybe some special meetings might be in order, depending on the items that come up.
Very good. So, with that, we will vote on option one, but we did take some comment about the addition of potential meetings in the future, but we do have option one before us. So, I move option one if we already haven't. Do we have a second on that option?
I second that.
We have a second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So, that item passes. Item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the November 22nd meeting. I will ask that we postpone that for the next meeting, given that neither of the council members, members here were there that day, so we will wait till the following meeting with the hopes that Councilmember Tina Harrow can join and provide any thoughts there. With that, we'll go to item number five, which is a presentation on the police officer hiring and review hiring process. And we have a couple of individuals from the Police Department that will present this item.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity, council members, to provide an update for you on our police officer recruitment and hiring. This slide here just gives you the current state of affairs, where we're at in terms of the number of filled positions in the first column there, at 314. Budgeted positions, 383, and the number of vacancies. We're currently at sixty-nine, and you can see we have eight. This was as of February 28th, so since then, we've promoted some sergeants. We have sixty-one police officer vacancies as of January 28th, so sixty-nine vacancies overall. Vacancies are created, as you know, in two ways. One is, you know, retirement and separations, and also through the creation of new positions. We've been averaging about thirty retirements and separations per year. In addition, since 1415, we've, we've added fifty-five new positions to the city budget. And this reflects not only the great support that we've had from council, but also the support we've had from our city manager, the chief, and everyone that's contributing to this, this effort to increase staffing in the Police Department. And table two here just kind of summarizes the various positions that were, have been added by fiscal year, and you see the bottom total there under sworn staffing of fifty-five. So, that's just some detail for you, if you wanted to, a little more detail there. Table three, this just, this table here summarizes our hiring since 2014, 16. In 2014, we hired seventeen, thirty separated, so we actually had a net loss of thirteen officers. In 2014, in 2015, we were able to increase our hiring a hundred percent to thirty-four hires. We still lost thirty-three. We netted one that year. But in 2016, we've had the most successful year in hiring that we've had in a long time. We hired forty-three officers, thirty separated, so we netted thirteen. So, over that three-year period, we've been able to increase our rate of hiring 253 percent. And we've been able to do that by, really, a couple, a couple things, by increasing efficiency, which I'll get into, into the next slides, and increasing capacity in various, various areas. As you can see, separations have stayed relatively flat, but our rate of hiring has, has increased. So, what have we done over the past three years? We've implemented continuous online recruitments to enhance our web presence. A few years ago, we didn't have that. We were just open, we would open a recruitment, then close it, and work the process, and in between, we didn't have a web presence in terms of our available opening. So, now, we're, we have a continuous recruitment, and we close recruitment and open it again immediately, so we're always out on the web. We completed implementation of our NeoGov electronic certification system, and that's basically the city's in-house system for processing hiring paperwork, and our partners and city personnel helped us with that and provided us with the support. We completed implementation of the ESOP background software. That was another increase in efficiency, and that's a system that our background investigators use to gather all the background information and process backgrounds. And we also developed our recruitment website, join sanannapd.org. In addition, we've increased capacity in our backgrounds section, increased from three FTEs to 5.5 full-time equivalents, and we are in the process of hiring an additional full-timer for a total of 6.5, once that position's filled. We recently combined the physical agility test, the sergeant oral interview, and the background orientation into one testing day, increasing efficiency there. And with that improvement, we've improved our rate of hiring to the fastest in Orange County. There's not another department in Orange County that's hiring faster than we are. We've also been able to add one full-time personnel tech and city personnel through the last budget process, adding capacity and personnel. We have a recruitment team that goes out and works recruitment events. We've scheduled over ten military recruitments in Orange LA and San Diego Counties this year. We've already attended three, two in San Diego and one in Riverside. And we also plan to attend other events in 2017 as they become available, job fairs, careers, expos, et cetera. We have, we have one scheduled at Long Beach State on March 16th, and at Saddleback College on April 12th. We hired a new senior personnel analyst that has a lot of recruitment experience, and she's here today, Lourdes Ferrer. If you could stand up or wave. Lourdes comes to us with ten years of experience recruiting in the city of Long Beach, and also recruiting for a company called Inroads. Here's a photo of three of our officers in front of our recruitment display. We have, we think, the nicest recruitment setup with this display. We recently have a top-notch EZUP that makes us the sharpest-looking department when we go to these events, and we get comments on our officers, how they're dressed, and they're Class As, and the display that we put on at these events, so we're having some success there. Here's a three-year look at our laterals. Since 2014, the San Ana Police Department has hired twenty-three laterals and lost six to other agencies. Laterals are an integral component of our recruitment strategy. They come with multiple years of law enforcement experience, they're academy-trained, and they're often able to complete the field training program in less time. So, we definitely appreciate when we're able to get laterals transferring to San Ana PD. In addition to the, the six that we brought on, or I'm sorry, the twenty-three laterals that we brought on, for example, in 2016, last year, we had an additional eighty lateral police officer applications, individuals trying to get into San Ana PD, so there's definitely a strong interest. Here's a look at where we're at with our academy and FTO program. There are currently twelve officers in the, in the academy. We got four recruits in Class 224, scheduled to graduate next month, six recruits in Class 226, scheduled to graduate in June, two recruits in Class 227, scheduled to graduate in August. There are currently sixteen trainees in the field training program, so a total of twenty-eight at various stages of the academy and FTO program. In addition, council approved a, an agreement with a company called Census to head a marketing campaign to hire police officers. Census is currently working with San Ana PD to finalize the campaign. The campaign will center primarily on digital paid search advertising with small, print, and outdoor campaign elements. The campaign is scheduled to launch the end of this month. Part of the Census campaign includes paid search for those seeking information on San Ana Police Department and careers in law enforcement, and the ad partners will be AdWords.
I found something on the web about those seeking.
That was interesting. Ad partners will include AdWords, Glassdoor, Monster, LinkedIn, the Google Display Network, and Facebook. Any questions?
Yeah, I think we both have a variety of questions. First, I'll make some general comments and some questions, and I know our councilman, Villegas, also has some additional ones. First, I do want to thank staff for agreeing to put this item on the agenda. As many of you know, hiring new police officers is a big priority of mine, given the vacancies that we have, as well as the, you know, crime spike, crime spike that we've all been experiencing, and not just in San Ana, but throughout California. First, just a couple other general comments. I think going forward, when we present to the public on our status of hirings, we need to be careful. I know there's been, you know, representations in the past of us adding police positions into our budget. For example, one item in here spoke about, I think, the overall addition about fifty-five positions. And in the past, when you tell the general public that you've added fifty-five positions into the budget, you know, a layperson will believe that you're adding fifty-five real new bodies to the force, and as we have seen, even though we've made great improvements over the past three years, calendar years, we really only have added a net of one position, and so we do have a ways to go, but definitely, we've been seeing some good process improvements. Some initial questions that I have, and, you know, we'll bring back this item from time to time, but my initial questions are, on a given year, so whatever is easiest, easiest to address, so let's say for the year 2016, how many total applications did we receive?
Yeah, I don't have that information available, but we can pull that together.
I'm sure maybe somebody here has a general sense of how many applications we received.
I believe north of five thousand.
So, so, okay, so at least, you know.
But we can get, we can get you a better number.
Yeah, that would be good. And over a course of a year, how many offers do we make for folks that we want to see enter the, then enter the force, or be recruits, or however we might want to measure that?
At least forty-three this past, this past year, as far as job offers.
So, is it really, we receive a very high number of applications? Many probably don't even meet the minimum requirements or pass some initial elements, but it's really that low percentage that we make offers to?
In general, they say for every hundred applicants, you hire one, and that's kind of just a generality in police circles, what those exact numbers are. You know, I don't know for San Ana, but that's generally what.
Okay. A related question would be, in those instances where we do make the offers, what's our yield rate? So, like, let's say we offer positions to fifty. Of the fifty, do we get about a hundred percent acceptance rate of them joining us, or do we, you know, make fifty offers, and of the fifty, only twenty-five of them take us up on it because they maybe receive a better offer in that time, in that time period?
I've heard of a couple instances where they have received another offer from another agency, but I'm not sure that it's all that common, and maybe.
No, I'll take that one. It's extremely rare. When we, if we make a job offer to somebody, they traditionally accept it. Our experience has also been, there have been applicants that are waiting, they're in a process with somebody else, and they're waiting to see if they get a job offer with us, because that's where they want to come, and then they hold the other agencies in secondary. So, if something happens along the way, then they'll go to the other agency, but their preferred agency is to come to San Ana, so close to a hundred percent.
And the folks that maybe don't reply quick enough, because maybe they get another offer or choose another place, do we have any general assessments for why they are not choosing to come to San Ana?
The one or two that we've seen have been more personal reasons. So, like, a rare one that I can think of, the individual took a job at Laguna Beach. Incredibly rare, but that fit into, into their desire of what they wanted to do in law enforcement versus, versus San Ana. Usually, we see the opposite. So, one of the things that we saw, I mean, this is how competitive it is. We had an interview on one day, and part of our process took two days to get the job offer, and in between those two, somebody else gave him a job offer, and, and they went to that agency. So, we fixed that. So, now, when they finish the, the interview, they get a job offer immediately, and then we finish the, the rest of the process.
Okay, so like, speed, that might be one factor. What about salary? Do we have any quantifiable or anecdotal information about where we're at in our starting pay and impacts there on decision-making, or on the number of applications that we receive?
I don't. I don't know that, that we're able to quantify that, because we don't get down into an individual discussion with each individual on why they choose San Ana over other agencies. You know, one of the reasons why most people choose to come to San Ana is because of, because of the community, the opportunity, the facilities, things like that. I mean, it's, there's, it's a total package, is what they're looking for.
Okay, okay. I would just suggest generally to our staff and our marketing firm that down the road, we really kind of do like market research to see, you know, of all the folks that are entering these academies or, or in the process of trying to become a police officer, that we get a sense of what items are important to them, whether it be schedules, whether it be starting points, benefit packages, because it's hard then to craft, you know, our, our job announcements differently, or, or target the right folks if we don't have a good sense of what, what, what some of their priorities are. And I know some of these things are, are ongoing things, and, you know, today, this is our initial meeting, so it's really just to get Councilmember Villegas and I up to speed, and so, you know, we're not holding folks to any numbers or generalities here, but we're just trying to get a, a general.
Councilman, can I speak to that on the market research?
Please.
That's one of the things that Census did as part of our initial research with them. So, they came in and spoke to ten of our new officers to kind of get a gauge for what it was that they were looking for in a police agency, so they could craft their message when they reached out to, to like-minded people, that, you know, "Why did you come to San Ana?" And, and for them, in the discussions, it frequently wasn't salary, it was more geared around the environment, the community, the opportunities, those type of things.
Right, right. And that's one, sometimes you also want to know, the folks that didn't come, why didn't they come? Because obviously, the folks that came here came for certain reasons, but I do appreciate that. Since you brought up the Census firm, when did the city council first approve that we hired that firm?
I believe it was June 2016, so that past June.
So, so this, this past June, and it sounds like at the end of March, we are going to begin advertising. And I'm sure it was for a mix of things, but, you know, given that it's a priority to hire folks, to have nine months from hiring to starting an effort when we're, you know, so constrained, would be something that in the future, hopefully, we can move a little quickly, yes, a comment on that?
Sure. That was, that was more strategic than anything else. A lot of the ad buys and things like that were extremely expensive during the Christmas season, so it was pushed to the beginning of this year to then coincide with the end of, the end of the school year. So, as people were getting out of school, our advertisements were coming online, and they were able to see it, and we were able to encourage people to come to, to San Ana.
Right. I understand, not sure, not sure that I'm in agreement with it, but I do appreciate hearing, hearing the logic. One additional thought that I have is, because you mentioned some of the places that we're recruiting now, does it make sense to go to local colleges and universities, and maybe we do, and speak to their criminology programs, speak to their pre-law programs, those sorts of things? Can somebody speak to what kind of outreach we do to our colleges?
We do outreach to San Ana College, and I know there's been a host of other colleges and universities, so, Jim, I believe you were involved in that.
Robert, do you?
Yeah, and the, the March 16th event that we're attending this weekend at Long Beach State, that is a criminal justice-type recruitment event, so, so yes to your question, we, it's definitely worthwhile.
Yeah, because if something like that works well, I would actually go into the classrooms and multiple ones, and multiple days, it's just a thought. A related item is, what do we consider an ideal candidate? So, like, if we have a sense of, you know, maybe if the market research kind of did, at least of the folks that are here, what tend to be the common characteristics of who's an ideal person?
Some of the individuals that we see that are more successful are those with military experience, those with education, those that have a little bit more life experience. Those seem to rise to the top in terms of being successful, not only in the process, but also as, as police officers, once they get acclimated and trained to, to police work. I mean, those, I think, are the highlights that I see. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you guys see from that recruitment.
The one other thing that we. The one other thing that we added was, was team sports or some type of sporting background, because of the, the self-sacrifice and dedication that it takes to commit to, to a sport translates into the, the same type of skills necessary to be in law enforcement.
What about geography? Do they tend to be folks from within the county that might be interested, or Santa Ana outside the county, or is, or is their home residence not much of a factor?
We seem to get a pretty good mix. And then, I'd like you guys to chime in, but what we get is a lot of officers that end up getting hired someplace else, and then they want to return home to Santa Ana and serve here in the community. So, we get some homegrown folks, and I know Deputy Chief Valentine's homegrown here in Santa Ana, but we do get some that, that go elsewhere and start off their career in another county, and then they want to get back here to Orange County and Santa Ana since they're, they grew up here.
Great, great. Couple last questions. We have, you know, a school police unit at Santa Ana Unified that I know Mr. Valentine knows quite a bit about them. Are most of their folks post-certified, and would they be likely good officers, or what considerations might there be there? That they might, might be either potential Santa PD officers or park rangers?
They, they are a post-certified agency, and as far as I know, and Dave, perhaps you can speak to this, all the officers meet the standards according to post. And it would depend on, on each individual. There are, just to be frank, sometimes in those type of departments, you do get individuals that have had issues or a history with, with other agencies, and they end up landing in, in one of the school polices. But that doesn't, you know, that, yeah, that alone disqualifies them. So, we'd have to look at them as, as individuals.
Yeah, because I think that might be something to think about, especially given to as many individuals probably know, Santa Ana Unified is in the process based off of declining enrollment and, and budget issues of having to consider laying off many, many individuals. And I would think probably potentially some in, in their school police force. That may be another reason that we may want to consider reaching out. And I'd like to have separate conversations with some of you after the, the meeting on that. So, those are my initial questions. I do want to thank the chief and the staff for putting this presentation forward and starting this conversation. I know it's a little tough because, you know, we all feel like we need more officers, and for a variety of reasons, we haven't been able to make the kinds of gains that we want. But at least, we do have room in the budget to, to add some folks, and we have some new processes and a marketing firm to help. So, I am optimistic. Vice Chair Viegas?
Thank you, Councilmember Solario. Chief, and the rest of the PD president, thank you very much for all the hard work that you do. Appreciate it very, very much. I know we need a lot of help out there. The numbers are down. I'm just seeing that we're consistent with, we average about 30 officers leaving the department, separating from the department a year. So, if we have 28 right now, in various stages, and I see that we're only, the next graduate class is going to be in August, that's going to be, we're going to be low again, right? I'm just looking at the numbers.
Correct. But like, for example, I have three laterals coming on, on the 20th. So, then that cuts down some of the training time. So, the numbers do consistently go, go up and down. And same thing with promotions. You'll get somebody who gets promoted to the rank of sergeant, and that leaves you shorter on, on the officer side.
Right. So, we're still going to be short. Maybe like last year, we added 13. And then this year, it's probably going to be a net about another 13 or 15 or something. It's still, our numbers are still going to be low. And I would like to see some, some more hiring. I don't expect for anyone to lower the standards. Santa Ana is a very active city. We need the best people working here. The residents deserve that. How many people do we have in background right now?
Actually going through the background process?
The last, the last stage.
We're currently, so, we're currently probably 15 to 18 in various parts. We just had a physical agility test. One of the things that Robert was pointing out was that, that we now do the physical agility test, the sergeant's oral interview, and the background orientation on the same day. That used to take place over a period of two months. So, it's now in one day. So, you show up on that day, you walk out in, in backgrounds. And I think within that 18, there's also either two or three park ranger candidates as well. So, we're working them with a, with a goal hire date of May.
Okay, because I don't see, thank you, sir. I don't see how we're going to reach our goal of being at maximum, especially this year, just by looking at what we're doing. I'm trying to see if there's a way to kind of speed that up, maybe for the next year or something. If anyone has any ideas or something that would be, be something to talk about. That's all I want to say. And thank you again for the great work that you all do.
Yeah, very good questions. Thank you for that. And that, that actually sparked a couple of additional questions for me. And one just general point, I think last year, you know, we had one of our best years ever in terms of the number of people that we hired. I'd like to, you know, encourage and nudge everybody that we have an even bigger number this year. Hopefully, the marketing campaign that we are getting ready to embark on will help. Another thought that I have, that maybe it's probably collective bargaining related, but, but the chief or others may have some thoughts, you know, that the separation, just because they do end up being quite a sizable number every year, are there things that we should be considering to retain them longer? Either some kind of retention bonus, or longevity pay, or, or maybe they want to be a park ranger instead of a police officer? Any thoughts on how we might be able to entice individuals to stay longer rather than separating?
Those are very good points. I, do you have some, some thoughts that, that may, may be helpful to understand the challenge? So, one of the challenges is that the, the PERS retirement system is, is very generous in that these folks will retire at 50, and then go to a non-PERS agency, in essence, double dip. So, that, that is the challenge. But in terms of retention, there may be something in terms of collective bargaining that can be worked out, that may create that incentive for somebody to stay longer. The challenge with individuals to be park rangers has to do more with the PERS system, in that they can't be park rangers and remain in the, in the PERS system. So, that's been a challenge. And that's something that we've had the city attorney's office look into. There are some cities that do allow for those PERS new attempts to come back and work, and it's on a temporary basis. But there is a question asked to the, the legality of it from the, from the PERS standpoint.
Got it, got it. And that's really a, a full discussion for another day, the idea of park rangers, and how, and how many, and where. But do appreciate that. But definitely in terms of collective bargaining, I do want our acting city manager, who is with us, Huardo Mott, and our police chief to think about as we are just really at the front end of our collecting process, collective bargaining process, that we seek out ways to entice our retiring officers to stay longer. A year, two years. I think, you know, we're short-staffed, that even an additional six months. So, at the very least, we, we, you know, hire a net number of new officers per the year. I'd, I'd hate to have another year where we hire a good number, but then have more separations due to retirement than new hires. So, hopefully, we could strive for that. And maybe at our, at our next meeting, maybe our, our, our chief with our acting city manager and our marketing firm can develop a goal for how many individuals do we want to hire this year? I don't know that there's a specific goal that we have in mind. If, if there is one, I'd like to hear it. And if not, maybe for the next meeting, you know, we can have a, a, a goal that we can all strive for.
The goal that we've set with, with Census is, once the Census goal is live, is 65 within the year from that point. So, say from April to April, 65 is our, is our next goal.
Okay. I know, I want at some point convert that into a calendar year goal, but at least you've started a discussion on that. And, you know, let's have another discussion, and maybe the, our acting city manager with our police chief and, and others that are part of the team can think about what a good number for the year might be, as well as, we also know with officers that are retiring, because they tend to retire just a little bit right after 50, we have a pretty good sense, because we know individuals' ages, how many separations we might have. So, we can also begin to do the math on, okay, 65 adds during a certain period of time, and, you know, how many potential separations due to retirements we might have. So, we can kind of do some forecasting based on that. So, I think that's a good start for this discussion. Again, I, I fully intend to have this item back from time to time, but this gives us a good overview. And don't take our critical questions to not be appreciative of the work that's been done. As, as Vice Chair Viegas sometimes points to, it's not just that we tend to be pro-public safety, as we both always have, but really, it's the demand from the neighborhoods where they're seeing the needs for public safety on, on a day-to-day basis. So, we appreciate the, the work that has been done. The next item is item number six, and we do have one public comment. So, we'll hear the public comment before we continue. And that's Peter Katz, if you could please come forward and provide your public comment, speak into the mic. And again, this is being taped recorded for our web listening audience.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm Peter Katz. I'm president of the Comling Board, which oversees all 64 neighborhoods in the city of Santa Ana. And we continually get complaints from all 64 neighborhoods about the public safety in this city. Since 1987, the Orange County Register has run an annual poll ranking the 34 cities best place to live in Orange County. We cannot climb above 30 in this county. And it's the five of the 15 criteria that they use to rank cities, five of them are in the public safety issue. So, on this issue, I want to talk about the homelessness that's going on. There's over 45,000 homeless people in Orange County, and most of them are right here in this city. We have a city attorney that says that the anti-camping ordinance has been enforced. Open this window here, and you see the tents outside, and you tell me that's being enforced. What I want to know is, this is spreading into the neighborhoods, the car break-ins, the robberies, the residential burglaries are increasing in the neighborhoods. It's driving down property values. And the civic center, the riverbed, the downtown businesses, the neighborhoods, they're all being affected. So, what I'm asking, that this committee, this city council, needs to drag the first district supervisor and the homeless sarves, Susan Price, and Andrew Doe before that city council. We need to make them accountable because public health and safety is a county priority. And that is their job, and they're not doing it. They are not helping the city resolve some of these problems. And, and it's a priority, and it's really affecting neighborhoods in this city. Last night, even the vouchers we get from the, from, I heard that Section 8 housing vouchers that we get in this city, person can take that voucher and go rent a place in another city. So, you know, this is what's happening. People are moving out of the city. We can't retain our people in this city. So, please, we need to make this a top priority. And how we do it, let's get the county involved. Let's get the sheriff's department involved, drag them before the council, embarrass them, and make them do their job. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that comment. Before we have, is this on this item?
No.
Okay. Before we give some, some general comments or questions, there might be a staff presentation?
We do. We have a presentation. I believe Commander Ibarra is going to give that presentation. And Commander Ibarra is responsible for the east command of the city, which includes the civic center area, and also runs our homeless evaluation assessment response team, which deals with the homeless issues throughout the city and the civic center.
Okay, great.
Good evening. All right. First thing I just want to talk about, as far as some of the public safety concerns regarding homeless. First thing, of course, it impacts our visitors, businesses, community, homeless, and anyone that's in the city. One of the issues with homeless now, as we saw in the last couple months, the associated dangers are fires, for instance, where that one homeless individual was killed. And it does create a problem to our infrastructure as well, when they have to shut down one of the lanes at the bridges because of the fire and the impacts associated. So, we're starting to see some of the growing issues with homelessness itself. It certainly creates a quality of life issue for not only residents, but visitors as well. And one of them, it's not just so much the homeless person itself, but it's the abandoned property and things of that nature associated with that. Some of the major issues that we also see is some of the sanitation problems, especially in the civic center. Certainly now, in the last couple of years, we've really seen a proliferation of a mental health component associated with our homeless community. And ultimately, what has happened is it's really increased in police services, or, or request for police services. And to give you an idea, about a year ago, we added to our computer system a code to help us, and I apologize for the background on this, a code to at least allow us to, to measure what is, what it's costing us, and how many calls for service we're actually responding to. And this is only a small picture of the calls for service that we're responding to. Again, disturbances is the number one call for service, as you can see. And you could see it started peaking out about mid-year, May, I think it was May of 2016. And it's kind of pretty much stayed stable. And some of the other calls for service as well that are associated with, with homeless trespassing, Santa Ana municipal codes, drunk and public. So, it is a significant amount. Hopefully, by next year, we'll, we'll have even more data to help with determining the, the, the impact of homelessness. To give you an idea as, as to the number of homelessness, there was, there's been some point-in-time counts through the, coordinated through the county. In 2015, for instance, there were 406 individuals in the civic center alone. There was another count done in 2016, and they went up to 461, as far as our point-in-time counts. Unofficially, the numbers aren't out yet, but there was another point-in-time account in February of 2017. And for the civic center alone, which is really the plaza of the flags, for those of you that are familiar with that area, there was about 138. One of the reasons for that is, there was also, the courtyard was not counted in those numbers. I believe it was going to be counted in a separate number. And I, I apologize, I didn't realize the background on this was going to come out in this manner. But you could see the, the count on the courtyard ranges from the 400s, the high 400s, to about the 360s, 350s, give or take. And this is every evening, people spending the night in the courtyard. So, that's a significant amount. So, we have the 138, give or take some, plus the 350 to 400, give or take, a few that are in the civic center area. And here's, and the courtyard alone, you could see here that they service at least about 700 people a day, between 680 to 700 people. That's providing them with some form of service, whether it's food, mental health service, you name it. And that's how they measure that. So, about 700 people. But that, what that means is that there's probably about 700 or so in the immediate area that are perhaps homeless. So, one of our response, responses to the homeless issue, we started back in 2012. They created the HART team, the homeless evaluation assessment team. And really, that was part of the civic center, and they were designed and trained to really conduct crisis intervention. They took a proactive approach to addressing homelessness by providing a positive impact on the quality of life issues for them. And I think the, the important portion of it is really the collaboration that the civic center officers have with the various agencies, the state, federal, county agencies, and also all the nonprofit agencies out there that are there to support our homeless community. And really, their main function is to identify someone that wants to get out of homelessness, and really provide them with the appropriate resources and/or the service. And it's- And it seems fairly easy, but convincing someone to provide them services can be very challenging at times. And just for reference, that is the Plaza of the Flags about a month ago, I believe. Initially, when the HART program was developed, it was really isolated to the Civic Center area and the immediate areas, but because of that proliferation of homelessness really in the last couple of years, we've expanded that to really the entire city. So, if anybody calls, reference a homeless issue, we will send our HART officers, that's a tongue-twister, to those areas to try to really provide them with the services. And if that does not work, then certainly we'll look at the enforcement aspect of it, which is always a tool for us to utilize. But first and foremost, it's really providing them with services. That's the important part of the HART program. In addition to that, we also trained fifteen additional officers on the resources available and how to deal with homeless individuals. It's because of the additional issues associated with being homeless, especially the mental health component. We've done a lot of roll-call training involving mental health assessment. We've also, in the Civic Center area, we've done a lot of personal safety awareness at the county, city, and our federal partners as well. One of the most important components that we also do is, within the city, is we work with our other departments, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and Community Development, Johnson Brown here, and really trying to, on the cleanups. We've added the cleanups on some of this excessive property. And I mentioned, we implemented the additional code to our computer system to help us measure the impact of homelessness when it comes to calls for service. But I think one of the most important things that we've done as an agency is we really collaborated with Orange County Mental Health, the PERT team, the Psychological Emergency Response Team. Through an MOU, we now have a clinician that rides with us two days a week, and hopefully that will be expanded to three days a week, and they really have been very helpful to not only identifying, you know, areas, locations where homeless are and need assistance, but also with repeat calls for service, or if a community member calls and says, you know, there's someone here always acting strange, could you provide them service? And so, we'll go out there with the officer and the clinician. So, that's been very helpful. That was about a two-year in the making program. And then, the next one also was Orange County Probation. We collaborated with them. In addition with their AB-109 officers that they have, they also have an AB-109 homeless team. And so, the probation officer and the chief were able to come up with an agreement, and now, we have two AB-109 homeless officers assigned to the Santa Ana Police Department, and they work with other AB-109 officers, as well as our Civic Center officers and our directed enforcement officers, so we can help identify those that are on probation and even provide them with service. We're also looking at different things with probation, for instance, in being creative in even having a mobile probation check-in, for instance. So, we're still looking at that. The next steps at this point is the continued community engagement and the outreach strategies. Those seem to be the most effective. We continue to seek opportunities to collaborate and partner with nonprofits and government agencies, especially the county. They've been very helpful and supportive. And really, at the end, it's the funding, with the support of council recently through the General Fund and ESG. You know, we had over eighty thousand dollars to help with the HART, and so, that's been very, very helpful. At this point, any questions?
Very good. Let's start with Vice Chair Vigas, and then I have some questions as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Solario. Let me see, where do I start, so much? On the cleanup, they're having the truck go out, right? I used to work down there, so I know extremely well. That truck gets full in about, god, half a block maybe, and then I'm told that, well, the officers tell me, hey, we can't take anymore because we don't have any more room at the county yard. And I know it's a ninety-day hold for the property. Is there any other facilities that we can house all that property, or can we ask the county for one of their warehouses? Never know to get some room to be able to move these things out, because I know the truck goes out there once or twice a week, it gets full, then they can't, they can't clean up any more of the stuff that's out there because there's no place to put it, which I understand. So, that's something I would like to look into. And the clinician that's going out there, great idea. I know it took a long time to get a person out there to get HCA, and I know that they're doing, what, twice, twice a week? Now, they're three times a week, is that it?
Yes.
But they're not out there on the weekend, correct?
Actually, the clinician we want is willing to work on one of the weekends, so we're looking at.
That would be great. If you get them five days, and you get them seven days, that would be great, because that is one component that's, it's key, because half these people are fifty-one, fifty anyway, so they need, that's the problem out there. There's no clinician, you know, there's extended wait time to go, to get them. I also understand that HCA won't, wouldn't put their people out in the, what is that called? The bus terminal, the center, unless the Sheriff's Department was going out to check on them. So, I guess it's, we got both teams. We have the PD out there, and we also have the Sheriff's Department out there, because I hear them on the radio every two hours going to check, so just wasn't sure if that's, if the PD's out there doing their rounds also.
Yes, the PD has been doing walkthroughs over at the shelter, and we have coordinated that with Susan Price at the county.
As a matter of fact, I asked, I called today, and I spoke with Susan Price, because I've been trying to get a meeting with her and Supervisor Doe to get together to find out what's going on with the county, because we actually need to work together. There's, I believe there's strength in unity, so we gotta work together to make this happen. This is the county seat. I'm sick and tired of seeing it like that. We gotta, we gotta act like it. So, I'm just a little tired of seeing all these things. I hear it from people from everywhere when I was out here. This is the county seat. Aren't you embarrassed? Well, yes, I am. So, I plan to try to do something about that. How many sex offenders do we have living in the Civic Center?
I'm not sure on the number of sex offenders. I'd have to call investigations on that.
Okay. Well, we might want to get a number, just out of curiosity, because I know the AB-109 units out there, and all the other units are out there, because a lot of these guys are homeless, and they're out of prison, so they're told to go to the Civic Center, you get a place to sleep, eat, and then, of course, there's a lot of other things. Let's see. I think that's it for the moment. Councilmember Solario?
Thank you, Councilmember Vigas. I have some general comments and some questions. I know this has been a big issue for our city and the county overall, and numerous cities, and I know that the city spent, you know, some good time several months ago in documenting the issue and declaring this homeless issue a public health crisis. I do know that there was, there were some specific recommendations that came out of that declaration, and I know the city staff has been tracking those things. One of the things that I'd like to say, kind of a combination of this presentation and these comments, combined with the recommendations and the outcomes from that initial big hearing at the council level, is to bring this issue back to a full city council meeting, to report back on the progress being made, as well as to take additional comment and maybe take additional ideas for recommendations. I know that in addition to our city staff, you know, the county has been, you know, working on this issue. I recently did also meet with Susan Price, the homeless czar, as well as County Supervisor Andrew Doe. They are committed of working collaboratively with us. You know, I mentioned that, you know, it's, I don't like that we kind of have been pointing the finger at each other, and I suggest that we do maybe some joint meetings, or have some of their folks come to our meetings and vice versa, so they can see that we're working on this together. They're very committed to doing that and very committed to offering resources and recommendations as well. The OCTA, former bus terminal, on the whole, is working as an emergency situation, but I don't know that there's anybody at the county or the city level that wants that to be a permanent situation. I know as well that from prior council decisions, it was reported at our last city council meeting, that there are about three hundred thousand dollars that were kind of put as a placeholder for doing some things. I know Acting City Manager Moi has some ideas on maybe, some ideas for the downtown, including just cleaning it up and making sure that, you know, we don't have the situation become too unsanitary, and that we do some things that are helpful for the crisis that we have there, but also in a humane way. So, there are those three hundred thousand dollars that are available. I do want staff to, over the next few weeks, figure out how to expend those resources that were meant to be expended, I believe, in this fiscal year, so we ought to do that. Also, I know that our Acting City Manager and some housing staff and I met with OC, the Wise Place, and they have some thoughts on how to serve women a little bit more at their facility. They in particular have a gym that maybe can offer some emergency housing. And then, that was one of the ideas that Susan Price with the county suggested, that sometimes rather than having just big things for the general population, that you can divide things up and do some things for women, or the youth, or veterans, and I think that's a very good approach. I do like that our police department is starting to track crimes or issue-specific to homelessness, so that's very good. And I know I've talked to a number of you, including our police chief recently, about making more data available on the city's website, including the police department website. I'm a big believer in open data, and information like this would be very helpful. And I know our Acting City Manager was one of the first creators of the first main website that our city has, so I do hope that you continue to work with our IT staff to move some of these initiatives forward, and I know we've talked about that. When we do bring this issue back to a full city council presentation, I would like us also to invite Supervisor Andrew Doe, as well as the Chair of the Board, as well as Susan Price, who's the homeless czar, as well as, I know, the Orange County Employees Association. They've done a lot of research and advocacy work in this area, so I'd like them to be specifically invited as well. Big picture, what I see is that we're slowly making progress in finding more housing resources for individuals. I think before it was a real problem to say, hey, you gotta get out of here, and they'd ask, well, where can we go, where can they go? And we didn't have much of a long list to share. That list is getting longer. One strategy that I like, that we're going to try to do more of them, and so, there's really about three or four, four projects coming down the line in this vein, and that is to take some blighted, rundown motels and converting them to be places to house veterans, or seniors, or women, items like that. And, you know, motels tend to be on a scale, small enough that it's manageable, comfortable for those individuals, you can have services there on-site, and then they tend to have a buffer away from single-family homes, and tend to be more in commercial areas or high-traffic areas, so that is something that I am supportive of. With my thought being, as we develop more of those resources, we really can't go to every area where there is a homeless individual in a campment and say, hey, we have a no-camping ordinance, it is citywide, and you have to move, and here's a list of resources, both for, you know, emergency housing, as well as other services. So, that's my hope, so that, you know, mid-year, towards the end of the year, we can really start fully implementing that no-camping ordinance. One question that I do have for staff, and again, just as a general thought, not that I expect any final assessments or recommendations. I know Supervisor Doe, to me, has made a good point, that one issue of concern with folks living in tents is that sometimes if they're too big or too tall, and they're not see-through, that there's the potential for mischief, or assaults, or drug dealing, or other, you know, bad activity occurring in that space. Are there any general thoughts about whether that is something to be concerned about, or is it not a concern, but any general thoughts would be appreciated?
I believe it's definitely a concern. We have had sexual assaults, we've had people shooting up inside the tents, and we do enforce the camping ordinance. Ruben, I don't know if you have any of the numbers related to that. I know we do have a city prosecutor assigned to the Santa Ana Municipal Code sections, but where it's a real big challenge for us is, what is truly the outcome of that arrest? They end up back in the Civic Center with another tent, and we deal with the same people over and over again. And perhaps it might be helpful, Ruben, if you can provide the committee just with some insight on the camping ordinance and the challenges with the tents and the crimes that we, that our officers witness out there.
So, one of the problems we do have with the tents, for instance, is, and you're talking about, there's some real large ones now, and the question is, well, which ones do we cite for the super-large ones? And how do we measure that? And then, you know, we run the risk of being sued because we only are targeting large ones versus a small one. But there have been issues of crime. In fact, the Healthcare Agency was concerned about it as well, and in the daytime, we go in, we make them take it down, we make sure they're not attached to any part of the Plaza of the Flags, for instance, because it's very important that we try to maintain a safe environment. As to the cleanups and things of that nature, one of the problems we have as well is, if we cite someone, oftentimes, the, there's a lot of property, and we don't have enough facilities to maintain the amount of property, and also, we don't have the staff, you know, to assist us in providing support. So, we collaborate with Parks and Rec at least twice, twice a week to do cleanups, and we will cite, if necessary, we'll certainly cite for homeless, if necessary. The numbers are relatively low, because typically, what we try to do is do the prevention and outreach first and foremost. And so, it is overall problematic, but I think we are making some headway, especially now with Plaza of the Flags. Again, we have a hundred and thirty-eight. At any given time, a year ago, we had four, five hundred, and you ask, well, where do you start? And so, now, we've identified all those that really need the assistance, and to your point of if we found a young lady that really needed assistance, that's the beauty of the HART program, is they know all the various nonprofits, and they will make those calls. And sometimes, we have to drive them all the way to Huntington Beach, you know, where they have a homeless shelter there as well. So, we'll do the necessary steps, and we put people on planes, send them to Arkansas, and things of that nature. So, we'll do what it takes to find that right service. If it's a family, for instance, you know, we usually find them right away, because they obviously stand out with kids, and we'll get them up. Sometimes, we'll put them up in a hotel. We do have funds available through the Mary Muth Fund, that was donated monies, so, and that's what usually helps to pay for the airport ticket, or the fare, or a hotel room, or things of that nature, and that's been very helpful.
And to the extent that it's helpful, the city attorney's office has been tracking the Santa Ana Municipal Code violations specifically here in the Civic Center, and we've been sharing that data with the presiding judge as well, and if we can provide that from the city attorney's office, I think that'd be helpful to the committee in terms of understanding what the municipal code violations look like here in the Civic Center specifically.
Right. Thank you. So, we do have an anti-camping ordinance. With respect to the size of the tents, maybe from a code enforcement perspective, is there anything outright illegal about a tent being too large?
I'm not familiar with any.
Right, and I see our code enforcement director saying no. Why, why don't you come up to the mic and please introduce yourself?
Welcome. Alvaro Nunez. Actually, the California Building Code doesn't count any structure over 120 square feet, so that would not be considered a permanent structure. So it would not be a code enforcement issue.
Because almost one thought that I have is maybe we kind of give some general guidelines for, you know, what's a tolerable-sized tent, and maybe, I mean, I don't know that we want to start providing free tents to individuals, but maybe that might be an option as well, especially since we do have those resources. Again, it's not necessarily something we want to promote, but I do worry about just assaults or other illegal activity occurring that tents are, in tents that are too, that are too large. On the issue of whether we enforce the anti-camping ordinance, I think we need to be a little bit careful there. I think when we say we enforce it, then people expect that you really do, and so I know when, I thought maybe it was an urban myth on whether we had one or not, so I did ask our city attorney about it, and she told me, yeah, no, it is in place, and it's citywide, you can't camp out on public property, and we do enforce it, and, you know, our office with the chief put a report together, and the issue is the issue with the courts, with them not being sympathetic, because they don't have other resources to go. But I think the better way to, the better way to describe this is that we use selective enforcement. I think at this point, you know, we selectively, from time to time, if there are, you know, real big problems, we do enforce it. But if one issue is the issue of space, on where we put this temporary belongings, that's something that I think the city can, with the vast number of warehouses we have in our, in our city, that there ought to be some property that we could contract with. So that would be, I think, to the kind of action that we can achieve over the next few weeks, and again, with the resources that we have in this fiscal year. The last point that I have, and then I know Councilman Viegas has some additional comments or questions. One concern that I have too, something else that I thought was an urban myth, but now I have enough real-hand reports to believe it actually, in fact, does happen, and that is, we have a number of public agency officials from other cities that drive their homeless to our downtown and drop them off, and you know, that's, you know, homeless individual dumping. There are, there are codes and laws, because I researched, I thought, gosh, something like this, you know, ought to be illegal, and it is illegal to do what's called patient dumping, so if you're a hospital and you let them out without a safe place to go. And I began to explore with our city attorney and our Acting City Manager, the idea of whether we can, as a city, do an ordinance that says that it is unlawful, at least per city law, for the dumping of homeless to occur. I know from a prosecution standpoint, maybe, we might not get there much, but I think more than anything else, it'll send a very strong message to other public agencies throughout the county that we know it's occurring, we don't appreciate it. I could see if it's something that's coordinated where, again, if, you know, if it's a woman that really needs to be at, let's say, the Wise Place, or a veteran that really has found a place at a veterans' facility in our city, it's one thing to have some kind of coordination in that fashion, if it's with that entity and in coordination with our city, but, you know, I don't think the city appreciates it being a dumping ground of any type for the county. So that's something that maybe Acting City Manager, if you can help set up a follow-up meeting with myself, the city attorney, our police chief, Councilman Viegas, if he'd like to join us, because I think there are some other potential legal angles we should be pursuing as well to minimize this issue. Councilman Viegas?
One more, couple of things. The HART team, great group of people, do great work. What I learned, a lot of people don't want help. That's what I learned. It is tough. It is tough to try to convince someone to stop doing drugs, or convince someone to stop drinking. It's very, it's very, it's, you know, it's, I understand these people are, they have families. I've seen a lot of really sad stories out there, but, you know, it's tough when they tell you they don't want the help. So many times, I've seen the good work that Santa Ana PD does. They get the housing, they go through all these hurdles to get someone some housing, and then the guy, or the person turns it down. It's sad. So, you know, the public needs to understand that. It's not like we're trying to do, not do anything, is some of these people do not want help. With that being said, do we, do we have any numbers on the service center? How many calls for service we have out there?
Was that one of your slides, Ruben?
No, I don't, but on average, we will get, you're talking about the courtyard?
The courtyard.
We'll get about 25 to 30 or so calls for service.
A week?
Yeah, a week. And that includes sometimes walkthroughs, but for the most part, about 25 to 30 calls for service.
And we do handle those calls for service. The county was handling them, and I had talked to the sheriff, and their response time was very delayed, because they were rolling from county pockets throughout the county. So since we already have folks staffing the Civic Center area 24/7, it was more practical for us to go ahead and handle the calls that.
Even though it's a county facility, the PD was handling the calls for service.
Correct.
Because I, well, I just see the cars out there quite a bit, and, you know, it's a lot of people, a lot of problems.
Right, fights and.
And Mayor Polito was right when he said he didn't want to create the Sever Center in that location, because it's gonna bring a lot of people from the outside, and that's exactly what happened. So for the record, I want to say that I believe he was right, because now, like Councilmember Solario said, that we're getting people brought in from different areas of the county. I've seen it myself from working out there, and sometimes the officer would say, hey, well, the, why are you bringing them here? Well, the guy asked me for a lift, and I told him he can get a food, you know, something to eat here. So that's, they just go around, they're not really answering the question. So I just wanted to mention that for the record.
Thank you very much. Again, this was our first presentation on this item, and this is an item that I want to bring back on a regular basis, because it's such a, such a crisis, and we need to stay on top of it. But before our next meeting, you know, I do want to coordinate with our Acting City Manager to see when we might have a presentation to the full board on the overall status of prior recommendations and thoughts and ideas that came out of this, this meeting. And thank you to the staff that made that presentation. I'm going to take one item out of order, because I know we have a representative from one of the stakeholder groups related to number nine, so I'd like to move item number nine next to the agenda without any objection. That is an update on the, an update and possible options regarding implementation of Measure BB. So we have a staff presentation, and I know we do have an industry association representative. I don't know if you would like to introduce yourself and make any general comments? No? Yeah, I appreciate you being here. The legal dispensaries are in the process of forming an association, and that is helpful, because it'll be easier to coordinate with the legal ones, to continue to eliminate all the illegal ones. But with that, let's, let's present the item. But we do have one speaker on this item, Ed Murashi. And forgive me if I'm still not saying your last name correct, but I do appreciate you being here from Floral Park, but as a general city leader, I appreciate your attendance.
Sure. Thank you very much for listening to me. So Floral Park basically has three issues. I just want to give you our top three to let you know where we're at. So homeless in the creek, that's a major concern. And the reason that's a concern, and I know you've already touched upon it, but one of the issues is dark of night, and it's not patrolled, and a lot of those homes have sloping backyards, so literally, the people in that creek can walk right up to your back door. So that's why it's such a concern for our neighborhood there. Second is traffic, but the city's working with us really well on the traffic issues, and it's helped us implement a few things, so I want to thank for that. And then finally, the reason that we're talking here is the dispensaries. We get a lot of, I hear a lot of stuff going on next door and other neighbors of, a lot of people that go buy the drugs there, they'll hang out in our neighborhood, sitting in front of people's homes, smoking and everything else, and then littering all the trash and stuff. We have some people that go out and confront these people, so that's why it's kind of a safety issue. We've seen marijuana brownies and things like that on the sidewalk, plus all the paraphernalia, you know, all that sort of stuff. So it's a, it's a major concern and seriousness. What I wanted to point out is, you know, if I leave my trash cans out, that's $100 a day, up to $1,000 a day fine, if the city really wants to push it. I don't know what the fine is for having an illegal marijuana dispensary within that close proximity to the neighborhoods, but to them, even if it was $1,000 a day fine, that's nothing to them. I mean, that's, that's, that's the cost of doing business. It's a write-off. So one of the things I would like to see you guys do is raise that. Raise that fine for any commercial operation, so you're not targeting them, but raise it to where it'll really start hurting them, and most operations would cease, or move, or change, or do something unlike these guys. Or the second thing is to open up the lottery. I know there were originally 20 lottery positions that, and not all of them have been filled. Maybe you might want to go back and reopen the lottery to the unfilled ones, and one of the requirements for you to be eligible to be in the lottery is you can't be running a business right now, you know, in a neighborhood area. So that's the only, funny thing, the only thing that good about the neighborhood, marijuana dispensary in the neighborhood, was one Enterprise and Girl Scout troop actually had their little table right next to the front door and made a killing selling good with Girl Scout kicks. Other than that, there is nothing good. Okay, finally, I want to wrap it up on a lighter note. Vintage Orange is a talk show radio on KUCI. They have a, they have a little show, half-hour show every four o'clock on Wednesdays. They love to talk about historical things in the, in Orange County. March 29th, we're having a couple of older neighborhood residents in Floral Park, it's gonna be on that talk radio show. So check it out, March 29th, KUCI Radio Station. Also, if you go to their webpage, you can hear the blogs after the fact, too. And then finally, our home tours coming up Saturday and Sunday, April 29th to 30th, and I'd love to see everybody there. Thank you very much.
Well, that's good marketing, and thank you for, for those comments, and maybe as part of the presentation, we might address some of that, but I do like your ideas as well with this. Now let's move to the staff presentation.
Sure. Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today an update on Measure BB, as well as options going forward. Little bit of history, Measure BB was approved back in November of 2014, received about 66% voter approval, made Santa Ana the first city within Orange County to actually permit and implement a medical marijuana program specifically for retail purposes. The measure allowed for up to 20 permitted collectives to operate within designated zones of the city, which are M1 and M2, which, these are industrial areas within the city. It established operating parameters and guidelines. It provided distance requirements, approximately 1,000 feet from schools, parks, recreational zones. It also created a mechanism for collecting taxes, and in this case, it is the gross receipts.
What is the tax? Tax rate, can you speak to that?
Sure. So the tax rate right now, it's set at 5% gross receipt tax for the sale of medical marijuana products. The ordinance right now, the way it's written, we can go up to 10% based on city council Along with the measure, there was recommendations by our city council to create an enforcement team, and back in November of 2014, the city council approved 11 positions, which comprised the Medical Marijuana Dispensary Task Force. This includes officers, I think five officers, one sergeant, two state attorney office personnel, two code enforcement officers, and one forensics auditor. In terms of enforcement efforts, we've also partnered with utility agencies, you know, our municipal water utility here in the Santa Ana, as well as the Southern California Edison, in our enforcement efforts, as long, as well as our community and some of our industry experts that we have. The results of the implementation of the measure over the past two years have resulted 15 permitted collectives out of the 20 that were, that are allowed per the ordinance. Four are currently in the pipeline, and one applicant is still to submit their regulatory safety permit to the police department for review. Over this two-year period, the revenues generated have exceeded 3.8 million in fees and taxes. The primary revenue generation here, just during the initial phases, really is the application process. By the end of this current fiscal year, because now we have 15 collectives that are operating, we're anticipating about 2.8 million or 2.6 million dollars just in taxes alone that will be generated. Because of the enforcement efforts, we have successfully closed 80% of the illegal dispensaries throughout the, throughout the city. At one point in town, we had documented approximately 124. We are now down to about 22 that are open. Our city attorney's office, along with our enforcement team, have working, have been working to successfully close these remaining 22 illegal collectives. Regarding the legal side or equation of the results here, 12 out of the 14 civil cases that were filed have been either dismissed or closed, which shows the success of the staff working on this, as well as the language that's included in the measure. Moving forward, in terms of Measure BB, there are some recommended changes that staff is, would like to see in the future. Many of these are really tied to the administrative policy. When the actual ordinance was prepared, we were running against the timeline, we were competing against Measure CC, which is a competing measure, so that, obviously, the ordinance, when it was adopted, there were some areas that needed some fine tuning. So staff is looking for opportunities here to amend the existing ordinance and include an administrative policy, revocation process, clarification of audits, transferability of permits, and other related items that are tied to the measure. Options going forward, and this is more of a policy-level consideration, you know, with the state and the governor approving a Medical Cannabis Regulatory and Safety Act back in October of 2015, they have authorized or approved up to 18 different types of licenses that touch upon cultivation, manufacturing, production, research and development, and testing, delivery, I believe there's also wholesale. These are an array of different licenses that are going to be available for cities, if approved by their city legislative bodies, to allow the permitting of these activities. So far, Santa Ana does not permit cultivation for commercial use, it does permit cultivation for personal use at their place of residence. Does not allow for manufacturing or production, does not allow for deliveries at this moment in time. Regarding the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, or more commonly known as Proposition 64, this particular proposition allowed for up to 20 licenses, with, it almost mimics the number of licenses and similar structure as the state medical marijuana regulatory program that will be implemented. Both Prop 64 and the state's medical marijuana programs are due to be, to begin January 1st of 2018. So our staff has conducted two roundtable discussions with owners of, and operators of the dispensaries that we have in the city of Santa Ana, and there's been a number of recommended changes or priorities that they have highlighted. So here is, is just the highlights of some of these, some of the recommendations. Some of these recommendations do require changes to the ordinance. Others may require a completely new ordinance, depending on the, on the request that we have here. So just off the top, it's obviously increasing enforcement efforts on the city's behalf to close these illegal dispensaries. Expansion of medicinal and recreational use within the, within the city. Along with the expansion of medicinal and recreational, the industry is looking to possibly allow or permit exclusivity for the current collectives that are operating that are permitted, as well as maintaining the existing zones and code parameters, allowing an increase in the operation hours that we currently have. This is a change that, if implemented, would require the city council to approve via the ordinance. The industry's also seeking to grant the same signage rules that we provide to a typical business, allow for delivery services, ability to revisit the annual audits, and adherence to generally accepted accounting principles, allowing for testing facilities, as well as eliminating the $200 overnight onsite reserve cash limit. From a policy-level discussion, some of the decisions that will need to be made in the forthcoming months, if the city council so choose to, to expand the uses, is determining what kind of uses they would like what kind of uses they would like to expand to. And also making a decision whether they want to expand to recreation, or if they want to expand on the medicinal side. Allowing for ancillary services, or these are other forms of businesses that are directly tied to either medical or recreational marijuana. Limiting or expanding the permitted zones that we currently have. So as I mentioned, right now, the collectives can only operate within M1 and M2 zones. These are industrial. Timing does become an issue. Staff is recommending that if there are any changes, that the changes are implemented hopefully by the fall of this fiscal year, which will allow us to allow us the ability to set up, work out the mechanics and the details behind the setup, as well as other standards that need to be established. Do you want to allow exclusivity or opening the process to other collectives or other interested parties to allow to have access or licenses to these uses? A revenue mechanism, right now, the way the ordinance is written, it allows for gross receipt tax on the sale of medical marijuana, if the city so chooses to expand to recreational side. This may require a separate ordinance and potentially voter-approved measure, pending the City Council, you know, approval. And also, there's enforcement and administrative efforts that go along with every single other use, whether it's recreational or medicinal. And with that, that concludes the update and presentation, and I'd like to open it up for comment or questions.
Thank you. You want to start, Councilmember Viegas? No, I'll start. I have an initial question regarding the Medical Marijuana Dispensary Task Force. Was that something that was required via Measure BB, or is that just an administrative or a council-directed task force?
I believe that came at the direction of the City Council. There is a staff report that was presented in November of 2014 that laid out the ground rules of the type of an enforcement team that the city was going to establish, and it actually laid out the types of positions and the enforcement effort that was going to take place at the time.
I think, for me, the kinds of things that I think are priorities are, first and foremost, enforcement, so that those shops that are out there that are operating illegally, that we shut them down. And I know the city, through this Police Department and code enforcement, have been aggressive. I think also, the industry itself has also weighed in and themselves moving forward on the lawsuit against some of those illegal dispensaries. The issue from the public did come up of the fine, and I wonder of the fines that we impose on the illegal ones, do we have a general sense of how much in fines we've done? And do they generally pay the fines or not? What kind of success do we have in recovering those fines? And then from a legal standpoint, if we did want to increase the fines, which was a suggestion from the public, how might we go about that? And any initial thoughts on that?
Sure. There was a fine structure that was implemented or adopted by the City Council, and it was tied to code enforcement efforts. If we could maybe have Alvaro come back up and can explain the process, as well as the various fines that exist.
So again, Alvaro Nunez, Code Enforcement Manager. We actually did change our fine structure correctly to deal with not just marijuana dispensaries, but commercial activities or hazardous conditions out in the field. Those kind of, and even to include planning and building type of violations, like hazardous conditions and dangerous habitation issues. First fine for those is the $1,000, followed by $2,500, and subsequently $5,000. And we could do it on a periodic basis at that point. As far as collections, again, we're, and we say that in a matter of code enforcement and task force, we actually separated the pretenders from the contenders, right? When we say we closed 80% of the illegal dispensaries, we're dealing with a very small group of businesses, if you will, that are very fixated in maintaining their illegal activity within the city. We're dealing with, you know, we identified this morning, maybe 16 key properties that account for those 2022 illegal dispensaries where we have ongoing activity. Our collection could be better, but again, we're dealing with folks that don't want to actually be compliant with our enforcement efforts. So on that note, we're within 50% to 60%, I believe, on our collection of the fines. In addition to that, in amount to the fines, we've also implemented, as Robert indicated, remove the utilities. We routinely contact the Edison Company, we cut the electricity. We remove the water utilities when we don't compromise the ability of an approved business at the locations. I'll give you an example, you know, north of a more infamous one, if you will, you know, on 17th Street, we've done that, right? We've cut the electricity, they bring in a generator. We cut the water, they bring in a water tank. So again, it's not so much that the city's not doing what they're supposed to, code enforcement or the task force or the Police Department, is that we're taking the steps that is necessary for us to be successful in court. When we look at the presentation, we see that we've settled 14 of the 16 civil cases in a positive manner. Again, in two years, 80%, and we increased the fines, cut the utilities. And again, not just for marijuana enforcement, apartment buildings, hazardous conditions, banquet halls. So we're doing what we're supposed to at that point, but we're dealing with key businesses that, again, are very fixated in maintaining their sense of activity, whether illegal or not.
And those fines, are you able to impose them on a daily basis? Would that be one way of assessing more, or should we double them? Any thoughts on that?
That's a policy call. I'll say it from my nature, I won't be opposed to increasing the amount of fines for this type or any type of illegal activity, I'll say it that way. But again, it's part of our code enforcement efforts, so we integrate as part of that our enforcement efforts in any type of enforcement. So we're doing it on a routine basis. I can say some of them are getting fined, maybe not on a daily basis, at least weekly or two times a week.
Very good. Some other general comments I have, so the enforcement is, I think, a top priority for me, and that's what I hear often in the public. I am concerned about the illegal ones and the competition they pose, either because of their later hours, whether in our city or surrounding area, that then they'll go to an illegal one in our city, or let's say, well, I don't want to mention other cities because then they may get offended, but, you know, they may go to a surrounding city, or they're doing deliveries. And so we want to be able to have, you know, authorities for our legal ones that, within reason, should be allowed to be competitive with those that are illegal. In terms of expansion, I mean, I want to hear more from staff and the industry, but I generally believe that services that are ancillary, that can be done onsite, or with modest expansion onsite, those, I think, should be considered more before use of additional facilities that may be too close to residential areas, for example. Or as a larger topic, you know, we do have a good share of industrial and manufacturing spaces in Santa Ana, but, you know, those properties tend to come with good jobs, and so I don't really want to replace good manufacturing jobs with what could be low-wage jobs. So we need to look at the economic impacts of any policies. And I know, I've mentioned with the industry, that as they want to consider expansion into other properties, potentially like, let's say, for cultivation, if the council did want to go in that direction, that we need to be mindful of things like living wages or other things that would be, things that would not create, you know, poverty industries, but industries that can sustain families. So those are the kinds of thoughts and considerations I have. Again, this is the first time that at least this committee with the new members addresses this, and I'm sure we'll bring back this item also on a regular basis. I'm committed to that. And I do want to thank staff for having done, I forget what the name of it is, but they're supposed to meet with the industry a few times of the year.
Roundtable discussion.
Yeah, the roundtable discussion. So I want to encourage the regular scheduling and participation around those, so we can, you know, work closely with our stakeholders. Councilmember Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing, how many code enforcement officers do we have, Mr. Moet?
How many?
Right.
I don't know. How many?
Six.
Thirty.
Thirteen.
And we used to have 25?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? And we're down to?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. All right, thank you, sir. Okay. So maybe staff can look into hiring some more. I know a lot of people have been asking for it, for the record, and to look into it. Can't do the work without the people. Can't do the work. It's just, put a little Band-Aid on these problems here. We need to have people dedicated full-time to work on these issues. I understand people, I'm not a fan of this business. I know what drugs do to people, but I also understand at the same time that there is medical use for it, and I'm all for it, just got to be responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments and questions. And I think, like we've seen too in our Police Department, oftentimes, we're not asking for additional officers to be added into the budget. Sometimes, they are in the budget and authorized, but just not being filled. So to the extent that we have any budgeted and authorized code enforcement officers in the budget, we ought to fill them. And maybe our code enforcement manager can say, at this point in time, are there any vacancies in your department? Not at this time. Okay, well, we'd like to keep that going. And I know in one of my very first conversations with the acting city manager in terms of budget needs, I did mention the need for adding more code enforcement officers to address issues related to this industry, homelessness, and working with our neighborhood associations, because it used to be, as a general rule, really, that our neighborhood associations typically had a community-oriented policing officer at every meeting, typically had a code enforcement officer at every meeting. And because of our limitations and staffing, and we did go through, you know, the greatest recession ever, at least since the Great Depression, you know, we did have to cut back. But now that we're in a little bit better, you know, financial standing, we ought to, you know, replace some of those key provisions. So you're right on with that priority, Councilmember Viegas. We do have a comment, a question from an industry rep, and if you could introduce yourself?
I've been outed as the industry rep. My name is Malaha Rafi. I represent the Santa Ana Cannabis Association, which is an association of the permitted dispensaries in the city. Our goal is to be working with city law enforcement to, number one, shut down the rogue shops in any facility that we can. We did file a lawsuit against 16 of the 14 shops that are illegally operating in Santa Ana. Their numbers fluctuate. I know we've got city numbers, about 24 or so left. Looking at weed maps, there's like 40 of them. So we want to work with you to narrow that down, limit additional dispensaries coming into the city outside of the 20, make the quality of life issues that are affecting people in the city a priority, community events, so on and so forth. You know, you'd be surprised to comment that if they weren't in our shop, they'd be in the homeless camp. Most of the patients that come in, the average age of the patients that go into the legal dispensaries is 41, 41 years old. It's not reefer madness. It's people coming in for their medication, whether it's for whatever reason. So thank you so much for the work you've done. I'm really pleased that there is an open conversation with city staff and city leaders and the policymakers on this issue. We're hoping that we can work together to implement this in the most effective way for the residents.
Thank you very much. And on that note, too, I know based off the last roundtable, I know a draft white paper that staff's been working on, and items from this presentation, this meeting, if there are changes that we need to make to any of our ordinances or policies that encourage our staff to try to move them forward as soon as possible, this is actually an industry where if we regulate it well, we're actually generating enough revenues to pay for any expenses, as well as sometimes even have extra revenues, so I would encourage that. The last note that I would make is I did receive either an email or a Facebook note from a homeowner, I think it might have been at Floral Park. Somebody was a little bit offended that they received at home in the mail an advertisement for marijuana, you know, their nearby facility. And I would ask that the industry be a little bit sensitive about the marketing directly to homeowners. I know in this world of the internet, you could really target the right folks in a more discreet fashion, so just want industry to be thoughtful about that.
The, I can promise you that the folks who are spending $10,000 to $20,000 a month on those billboards would not have done so if the ordinance, the rules for the signage were not so draconian and made it so difficult for people to be able to find these businesses. And I think-
I was not mentioning the billboard, so that does come up. I was mentioning the, and I think I had forwarded you an email, direct mailers into people's homes, and just being mindful of, trying to be a little bit more careful there. But the point we'll take in on the advertisements, that we got to figure out how to do it in a discreet way, but without, you know, really empowering the legal ones through disempowering the legal ones. So thank you there. And also just bring that up, because I do get a lot of emails or Facebook posts, and I do read everything myself, and so I appreciate the feedback there. Seeing no other question or comment on that, we'll now move to, back to the regular agenda order. Item number seven, police officer body cameras, an update on that?
Sure. Sergeant Mike Gonzalez, he's the Body Worn Camera Coordinator. We'll give an update and a timeline.
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair. We're going to start with the RFP. In the spring of 2016, the city, Santa Ana PD, we started receiving different RFPs. There were seven different proposals submitted. A Body Worn Camera Committee was established prior to that, and after reviewing the different types of proposals, they shortlisted it down to two, which would be TASER and Discover IT. Pilot program was initiated in the fall of 2016, out of those two vendors that were selected, again, based on, we felt our needs, we pushed them out to patrol, special enforcement detailed to Civic Center specifically, and we'll show you some videos there. The gang unit, we also have some videos there, so you can have an idea of what it looks like and for the traffic. Just some background information, six cameras were purchased for the MMD team in 2015 for an operational need, and we didn't do a pilot program on those because we needed those body worn cameras on hand and out in the field. This is our plan of action and milestone. We selected TASER in the end, based on, we did our due diligence, went out, sent me to different programs, post-certified training. I was down in San Diego. We met with the DA, the ACLU, and the press. Went to local agencies here, Anaheim, up north, LEPD, San Diego, and Long Beach, trying to determine what would work best for our city. We recently had a discussion panel with the Orange County DA, which helped us making that decision for TASER, because they have an easier implementation of transferring evidence from our officers directly to the DA's office without an officer having to go. So the evidence goes, the video itself is evidence, goes directly to the DA, and the DA can open up there and utilize it for court purposes and for discovery needs. So our plan, again, is April 4th, 2017, the council awards a contract. You see, in May, we have complete the electrical and network cabling for that. We've already worked with the engineering plans and the layout for that. So we're working on that, but we've not pushed any buttons yet, just so when we get execution time, we won't have to waste any time at all, as far as implementing it, where we're going to put it. Expectations of equipment delivery at the same time on the 4th, 20th of May, complete the Train the Trainer Program, and that will be for the officers that will be training, oncoming officers and executive staff on the utilization of the camera itself and how it relates to evidence, tracking it, utilizing it, sending it, and sharing with other detectives or other agencies if they have the TASER evidence.com. At the same time, they'll send down their support staff to train our support staff, and that would be senior administrators within our department, which would, depending on the roles and permissions, allow them the capabilities to look at different videos for whatever, whether it's utilizing them for evidence or for reviewing for training purposes. May 21, at the same time, the day after we complete that training for support staff, we'll initiate our officer training. July 1st, we hope to have patrol full implementation, which means officers are fully trained and all the cameras are out in the field, within August 1 date of 2017, which would then allow the investigations to be completed as well, and they would have all the- the investigations to be completed as well, and they would have all the training they would need. I'm gonna show you some typical videos. This is the civic center, our civic center. There's different positioning on the, where you want to wear the camera, and our policy is written long as it's forward-facing, and that seems to be the general agreement among law enforcement agencies throughout the nation. So this officer right here, and we were looking at different types of body positioning. This is a, he has it clipped upon his waist, so it's facing from his waist outward. That's the same individual that was detained, a bag of methamphetamine. The civic center patrol officer there is searching the arrestee's backpack, producing more narcotics. This is the gang unit during a vehicle search.
Uh-oh. You guys something, boys? We got this strap over here. You wanna pull that up? There's this one here, like the thing on the end. Sit in the corner, sit behind the seat, right there, bro. I think I got four seventeen, boys. Woo! Oh, I got it, I got it. Pull up a little bit. You got a block, with a light on it. It's laser. You too.
So what the cameras also allow the officers to do is almost narrate their report of the evidence, how they're describing it, where they found it, what type of gun, and utilize that toward the, as they complete their reports. So, question, sir?
Report, do you want to start, Councilman?
So this, the camera is actually sending the feed over to the TASER download, is that where?
Yes, sir. The way the camera works, the camera records all the video, and it stays with the officer. At the end of each shift, per our policy, the officer will put it into a docking station, which we're placing him in the report room to be more efficient, far as an officer checks in for his daily shift. He's in the report room anyway. He puts it into the docking station, it begins uploading it to TASER. And once it's in TASER, the video can't be touched. The officer's allowed to, he'll have a small app, he'll either use his phone, or have a cable and be able to plug it into the new MDT's we have in the vehicle. If he wants to download it, he opens up the, an application, he can either use his own personal phone, or you can purchase an iPhone. The interesting about them using their own phone, the video itself is never on the camera. This is just a portal viewing what's on the body worn camera itself, so the camera can't be brought into court as a piece of evidence. And then the officer then documents what case it is, what type of crime it is, for easy of retrieving that evidence.
That was one of my questions regarding the phone, so that's a good thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Couple of questions I have. So, they'll be worrying, but how is the, like, the on-off controlled? Is it always on? Is it when they get out of the car? What triggers the start of a record and the end of a record?
Well, part of the pilot program, and working with the city attorney and Mr. Carroll and the deputy chief, when we chose TASER, it's because some of the specific applications that it had, and that other companies did not have. So to turn the power on, the officer taps it twice in the center, and the camera begins recording. As a program administrator, I can control whether it beeps or doesn't beep. So can the individual officer. If he wants it to come on, it will be on either vibrate, or it can make an audible noise, so he knows. So the camera's on, he can determine, it can be on, but not recording. So he can push a button. Thirty seconds prior, before it begins recording, it's buffering, and you might have seen in some of these incidences that you see on the news, you don't have an audio for thirty seconds, and that's a buffering period, where it's continually recording, and then it dumps that. If he pushes it on, it's gonna record thirty seconds prior to the point that the officer initiated, prior to the officer initiating the record feature. Additionally, with TASER, TASER is also the same company that we use for our electronic TASER weapon. Part of their new program that they have, is their new TASER weapon itself has a device, a Bluetooth device. When the officer activates his Bluetooth, it will turn everybody's camera on to record mode within thirty feet. So if there was an incident, and the concern would be officer's safety, where I need to exit my vehicle and just turn on my TASER, not just deploy the darts out of the bays, that everybody's would start recording as well, which includes that twenty-second, or thirty-second prior to the officer putting it on. Part of the body worn camera issues, as well as if and when it's decided that there's a certain video, and it needs to be pushed out to the public. It comes with an redaction software, which will allow the officer, the body worn commander, coordinator, to look at a video, and put a block on an individual's face if it's a victim, also block a certain license plate, and we can edit certain sections. So if an officer was in an incident that lasted an hour, and I was directed to provide just five minutes of that specific section, and to have it redacted, we can do it slide by slide, very time-consuming, but it can be done, and then pushed out to whatever the council or the chief of police directed me to do so.
And on the timing table, it made mention of patrol implementation, I think it was July 1st, followed by investigations, August 1st. After those two general areas are done, is that the totality of all the officers we're intending to? Were these, as well as, like, does the gang unit fall under investigations? Or speak a little bit to, what percentage of our overall officers would have them as of August 1st?
Yes, sir. The ultimate goal is everybody's trained, and that's why we include that Train the Trainer, as officers come on board, whether they're laterals, or they're new hires, we'll conduct that during Officer Orientation Period. They'd get training on the TASER and how to use it.
But everybody that is an officer that goes out into the field as of August 1st will have a body worn camera?
Yes, sir, and that's the way the policy is written, and that's a direction I've received.
Okay, and so like under investigation, that's where the gang unit is in, or when, for example, is the gang unit?
Their program for that as well, but as some gang officers do additional patrol time as well, if there's an opening beforehand, or for some reason if somebody gets sick and can't make that training there, we'll reach out and plug them in, so we can, everybody is trained as soon as possible.
Okay, so as of August 1st, everybody that's out in the field will have one assigned to them. And does it make sense that everybody has one, or are there maybe some officers or more discreet units that don't need them?
Well, our undercover folks wouldn't have them. We have a handful of administrative folks that work in training, they wouldn't have them, and, you know, the management team wouldn't have it, because we're not out in the field. But in terms of all the folks out in the field, definitely, and as Sergeant Gonzalez mentioned, we just require that it be forward-facing. So some officers will wear it here, others will wear it on their belt, and the good thing about that, it gives different perspectives of an incident, because even though it provides great information, we know that, you know, the video doesn't capture fear, emotion, and all those different things that really aren't tangible, and so it's very important to have as many perspectives as possible.
Very good, very good. And in terms of viewing policy, I like that essentially they finish their shift, you know, they have to, they have to essentially upload the feed, but when there is an issue of controversy, or an officer involved shooting, or something else, and, you know, and then staff probably has already begun to put some of these policies together, what's gonna be the general policy direction of how and when we might be, might make these videos public?
Yes, we do have, the policy has been completed and vetted by the city attorney's office, and the video that's evidence will not be released. There may be some circumstances where you do have a very controversial incident, where we would have the discretion to go ahead and release the video, and of course, we'd have to take the redaction into account as well. So there is a possibility that we would release video during a controversial incident, but we do have to be very careful that most of this video that's captured is evidence, and we don't want to jeopardize any criminal prosecution.
And when there are more minor cases, and is evidence, it would be though available after the conclusion of any legal proceedings, or?
Yeah, we do have a retention period. I don't know if you recall, is it two years?
Yes, there's state law, but state law and state statute provide for a retention period, and each case will be taken on a case-by-case basis, because there is an appeal period. After a criminal case is concluded, there's an appeal period.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Vegas, some additional questions?
Yes, I was just gonna say that I'm glad that the feed doesn't upload to the phone, well, because it could take up a lot. And can they, can they go back and look at a previous video, let's say for the day prior, or the week prior? Is that, they go by dates, so they can have access to it?
Yes, sir. The way that program works, the officer, once it's uploaded, only he has access to the videos, the cases that he was involved, and he can't look at, and that's roles and permissions established by the chief and the SMT, based on past best practices that regarding TASER itself and the body worn camera. So an officer can look back at any time, and he can send the video, if somebody's going to court for him, he can send it over directly to the DA, and the DA has the capability of downloading it, and then providing it for the district, for the public defender, part of a discovery. So the question is, yes, an officer can log on and look at his prior videos, if it helps him refresh his memory for a report. And if it's, if he's there and he wants to refresh his memory prior to uploading it, he can look at his camera, and he does his daily reports. So let's say he's down two or three reports, and he just needs to take some notes of an interview, he can look on his camera right there, and what he recorded.
It's also a good thing it doesn't upload, it doesn't go out to the public or anything like that, because that was, that's a very good thing. If not, he ended up losing his phone for, and evidence, and the guy's running around with no phone. But yeah, because, and it's good that it's controlled, that's what I'm saying. Very, very good. Thank you very much. Sounds like an excellent choice for the vendor.
Thank you very much, staff, and chief, and office members for bringing this forward. It is a priority of mine to have, you know, full implementation of this as soon as possible, so I do appreciate the chief and the rest of the department moving this soon to our city council for final implementation. With that, we now go to item number eight, which is presentation regarding a vendor TRITAC and their integrated software.
Great. Thanks, Jacenia. Chair and Vice Chair, so this presentation, I grabbed it, it was the original presentation that I gave to Public Safety several years ago, to outline kind of the problem that we were experiencing in the department, especially as far as future growth and use of technology went, and then to propose a solution, and then I'll talk about some of the solutions. So, integrated software system for the Santa Ana Police Department is what we're looking at. So going back to the original technology that we bought for the department, late eighties, early nineties, we get a computer-aided dispatch system. So it's a standalone system, and then over the years, when that system would get to be end of life, then we would buy and train a new system. So we also eventually went to computerized report writing, and we purchased and developed a system for report writing. We also have a system called Crossroads for traffic collisions. We have a digital information management system called DIMMs, where we keep all of our evidence photography. And we have a records management system, and the thing about a records management system is, it was created by one of our officers. The system itself doesn't grow or improve, because the officer has since retired, it doesn't, it's not up-to-date in the latest security features, and it requires a lot of people power in order to make it work for, to move some of the information from one different part of the records management system to another. And then we have a case management system, so that, it's an access database where all of our crime reports go up to investigations, and then that's how we track any type of investigations that are being worked by our investigative unit. So ultimately, this is what the systems look like within the department, and it's truly siloed. Each of these systems is independent of each other, the information is not shared, the only way to get to it is to log into that different system, and to, and then to access it that way. So ultimately, when, if we arrest an individual, the data entry required for each arrest was sixteen different times. So for each individual that we arrest, we do a report, and there's information that gets entered into sixteen different systems. We release that person, we arrest him the next day, and we have to turn around and enter the information into sixteen systems all over again. So you can see over time, just the redundancy and the time effort that's required to do something like that. So here's some of our limitations. Information entered into multiple systems by officers and staff, the inability to search data efficiently, so if you want to go search for something, you have to go into each of those different systems to go search for it. Police reports, because we're having to re-enter data all the time, takes a long time to do, and requires substantial data entry, and also results in a lot of data error because of the human factor. And then our data is compartmentalized in multiple different databases. So here's what an integrated information system would look like. It's all of those same, the same systems I described, but all within one, so that they're integrated, so that when we, when somebody's involved in a traffic accident report, or they're a victim of a crime, or we write a traffic ticket, all of that information is stuff that we can use later on, and it's all contained within one system. So here's, I'm gonna go back for just a second. So what that allows us to do is eliminate all of the repetitive data entry that we currently do. So all we have to do is enter somebody into the system one time, and that's the last time that we'll ever have to do it. So an officer that goes to take a report, will check for, say, the victim's name, and see if the victim's in our system. Well, the victim may have been in a traffic accident, so the information's there, they'll just go ahead and drag and drop it into the report. Maybe somebody got a traffic ticket, the information's in there, the officer will drag and drop it into the report. Maybe it's a suspect that we've contacted before, same thing, they'll drag and drop it. So basically, when, just to get all of that information can, into the report, rather than taking an hour, hour and a half to get all that done, they can be done in less than five minutes. Here's the way that, with TRITAC, it's divided up into two parts. The CAD, which is the CAD and the mobile, and the records management system, which has all the different systems that you see listed to the right. Coincidentally, today is Go Live Day for our CAD and our mobile system. So we just, we turned off the old system this morning, and turned the new system on at 6:00 AM, and it is going flawlessly. So I will, I'm gonna hand this to you, so you can take a look at it. It's our new MDC.
Our able vice chair, he's in the law enforcement world, so...
Coincidentally, today is go-live day for our CAD and our mobile system. So, we just, we turned off the old system this morning and turned the new system on at 6:00 AM, and it is going flawlessly. So, I will, I'm gonna hand this to you so you can take a look at it, it's our new MDC.
Our able vice chair, he's in the law enforcement world, so.
So, that's the new system that, in order to make our software work, the computers that we had in the cars were not fast enough and powerful enough to deal with it. So, that was one of the first things that we had to do. That is a, it's a laptop and a tablet, so you can spin it around, it becomes a tablet as it sits in the car, or the officers can take it out, talk to a victim, go into a hospital, do a report, and they're able to work on it, and Wi-Fi's back to, back to the patrol car. So, they get all of their calls on that, and the system is, it's up and running, we've been working on it the last month, and it's operational along with the CAD mobile. So, the records management system is going to be one that we're going to be focused on for, for the rest of this year. We have a projected go-live date for that of November. And basically, this is going to revolutionize the way that we do law enforcement. So, one of, a couple of the opportunities that we're going to get out of the new system is, we're going to be virtually paperless. Currently, well, I'll get to currently, so we're paperless, we're going to eliminate all the redundant data entry. So, as part of this project, we had a consultant come in and do a workload study, and conservatively, the elimination of all the redundant data entry frees up about 12 officers, full-time equivalent and in gear, and two sergeants and seven records clerks. So, the estimate at that time was that it's going to save us $3.5 million in efficiencies just by the use of, of the system. It'll improve service, obviously, because the officers will spend less time completing police reports and more time available for calls for service. And we'll be able to provide more effective law enforcement to the community. So, ultimately, going paperless, so it's environmentally friendly, and this is a conservative number. So, the way that we have to do things with the old system is, we do, we move police reports around the building, it goes to different places, and then people have to do the data entry. So, we're, we create roughly 40,000 police reports a year, 100,000 report copies. Conservatively, we looked at half a million pages, it's probably more like three-quarters of a million pages of paper, just in order to move police reports around the department. Okay, so this one, I can't see that far. So, with the integrated software system, we're gonna, we're gonna have cost savings, both in, in the paperwork and the data entry. We're gonna improve the response times, because our officers aren't busy doing data entry, and not just our officers, records personnel, their, their mission is going to be completely redesigned, because they're not going to have to do a lot of the redundant data entry that they do, laser fishing of the reports. We currently do UCR information manually, which for an agency our size is incredibly complex. This, this system is built so that, so that all of our UCR will be done automated. We should be all increased criminal prosecutions, and where that works is, so let's say that we get a, an individual that commits a robbery, and all we get is a physical description. Currently, there's no way for us to go check our systems to look for that particular physical description, but with the new integrated system and field interview cards, we can look for, do basically a Google search, you know, show me everybody that's between a certain height, show me everybody that drives a certain kind of car, show me everybody that has a certain kind of tattoo, and it'll pop, it'll tell us, hey, these are all the people that are in the system that match that description. So, we can go in and solve crimes based on physical description, just by virtue of the information that we have entered into it. And then, lastly, it takes full advantage of the available technology. This is a system that we will use for decades. It is, it grows and evolves, it's in over 100, or over 1,000 police departments in the nation. The company that we selected is on the, on the cutting edge of technology and law enforcement. That's their job. They focus strictly on law enforcement technology and providing both CAD and, and mobile. The CAD, by the way, is also, Orange County Fire Department has it, and San Ana Fire Department had the TRITEC CAD prior to that, and it's been described as the Cadillac of CAD systems. So, this is, it's an elite company. One of the directions that, and we're able to be successful with this, is Chief Rojas made this an absolute priority for us, and it was his direction to us to find the best system available, both in the MDC and in the integrated software, that would make us better, more efficient, and more responsive to the community. And with that, I'll take in questions?
No, that's an excellent presentation, and it looks like some good technology, and it's gonna save a lot of time, and it is equivalent to hiring some new officers. Maybe with the new hirings, we can, you know, take some credit for this possibly, but it's excellent, definitely in that, in that regard. I just have one item that's related to this, but also unrelated in a more big-picture way. I know for, for emergencies, you know, if somebody, you know, out in San Ana has a crisis of some sort where they feel they need to call 911, they could call 911, but there is a non-emergency officer to the police department that's something just kind of lower tier, that maybe isn't as immediate or isn't as threatening a situation. What I'm not sure that exists, because I've searched for it, and I'm not convinced it exists, or maybe I'm just not finding it, but there ought to be like an online version of that, so that if something's occurring that's not a full-blown emergency, that they have a kind of a non-emergency online email or website where they could log on it and they could get some kind of response back. Is there some equivalent to that? And this only ties in in that as we're, you know, combining all this data that reports and incoming, probably in some respects, might tie into some of this.
We do have some online reporting, but it's more static. I don't know about a more live, that's what you're alluding to, right? More of a live response?
Right.
The future of communications and dispatches, what they call Next Gen 911. So, it has the ability to receive text messages, the ability to receive online things, and remember, the thing about 911 is that it's localized. So, when you send something, it goes to your local department, otherwise, it wouldn't do you any benefit. So, with Next Gen 911, it will, it will route to the right agency, no matter the form that it takes. The, the future is also, they, not to get too technical, you have X and Y coordinates, but the future Next Gen will have a Z coordinate. So, let's say that you're in the 10th floor of a building, we'll know that you're in the 10th floor by the, by that extra coordinate. So, that's all coming in the, in Next Generation 911.
Right. I mean, I get all the Next Gen stuff, but I'm talking about, we have available technology now where, you know, whoever's receiving that non-emergency PD call at some point, why can't we assign them an email? Or, I know there is, I did find that you can, if you have an actual crime that's occurred and you want to report it, there's a way to file an online report, but I don't understand why it would be too problematic to assign a department or whoever is answering the non-emergency PD calls to be assigned an email or a text number, you know, maybe even the equivalent to the MyApp kind of stuff, but that's a whole nother conversation. And maybe you don't need to give a response now, but I do want us to think about implementing something like that, because I don't think it's a Next Gen thing. I think it's just a matter of practically how to do it and staff it, and, and kind of parameters that we have run, how to control it. Because I found myself often that I'll get inquiries from others of things they want me to report, but it's not really a 911 thing. Or, if you do a 911, there isn't really a documentation of that, where if it's by email, you know, you could write it down, and there could be some clarity, and, and again, the equivalent of a non-emergency call. So, just food for thought, so that.
It's worth investigating.
Our department can, can look into that. Any other question on this item, Councilmember Vegas?
No questions.
No. Good work, great presentation. Much appreciated. Next, we go to, we already did item number nine, so we now go to item number 10, which is the implementation of state second dwelling unit ordinance, or the proposed ordinance, and we have two speakers on that. We have Mike Tardif, followed by Peter Kets, if you want to come to the mic and present your comment or your question.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and police officer, officers. My name is Mike Tardif. One of the issues that comes up with accessory dwelling units, or I'll call them granny flats, is parking. When you have additional square footage in homes, additional rooms, you're gonna have additional people, and they're gonna need parking. I think San Ana needs to have its own granny flats ordinance, rather than going by state law, which we're doing now. I think that ordinance needs to recognize that parking is overburdened throughout the city, and, and then, rather than having parking, what do you call it, parking permits, which is, you know, that's very cumbersome, and to do that throughout the city would be just a nightmare, because its granny flats ordinance is throughout the city. And all it would take to make some neighborhoods, which are on the edge as far as parking, is for one granny, one, one home to have a granny flat, or maybe two on a block. It just, it would make parking on that block in that neighborhood, you know, much more difficult. Let's see. Oh, 80% of San Ana has been designated as park-deficient. That's in San Ana records. I don't think we need to encourage more overcrowding of our parks and neighborhoods through a liberal granny flats ordinance, which is the state law. I believe that San Ana should develop a more restrictive granny flats ordinance. More and larger granny flats in San Ana would make traffic worse and would do nothing for public safety. Some will say granny flats are needed for family members, you know, and that's probably true in many cases, but we all know, that's, that's not exactly how it works in San Ana. The city cannot even enforce illegal room rentals now and home occupancy levels. And finally, isn't it true that the new updated state granny flats law has certain mandates that must be adhered to, but also has significant wiggle room for cities to formulate an ordinance which fits the needs of individual cities? This is what Assemblyman Tom Daley's representative related to the community at a recent CommLink meeting. So, thank you.
Your time is up, but you got through your smartphone and did quite well, so, thank you, you got every point, and I appreciate it. Next, we have Peter Kets.
Yes, sir, good evening. They're turning out the lights on us. So, as president of the CommLink board, Mr. Higani knows, he was at our meeting, we had State Senator Janet Winn, we had Tom Daley at our meeting to try to explain this law, and I support an additional ordinance for the city of San Ana to enhance on what we can do in the most densest part of the city. We're the second-densest city in the state of California, the fourth-densest city of its size in the nation. Parking is a major issue in these neighborhoods. This would create more problems, more police problems, and more neighbors fighting with neighbors. And perhaps it's time for the city to establish a parking commission to deal with parking issues within the city. Other cities have parking commissions, and they more administratively do a better job at working with problem issues throughout the city, and maybe we can create a more uniformed ordinance to deal with parking in some of the denser neighborhoods. And perhaps some type of task force dealing with slum lords that allow hundreds of cars to park on neighborhood streets. So, perhaps a slum lord task force might be in order for the city, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Much appreciated, and thank you, thank you, Mike. We do have a staff presentation on this.
Yes, you're short.
Please.
Members of this committee, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about this. Staff, a few months ago, prior to the state's new ordinance being enacted on January 1st, was aware that the state was going to come up with this requirement, and we, and staff, candidate Neil, who's the planning manager sitting next to me, and her staff prepared, with the help of the city attorney's office, an ordinance that completely complied with the state, did not go further, did not fall short. Having been a guest at the CommLink meetings and presented this myself, and the reaction that I saw from CommLink, I could understand why the senator would probably say that there's more wiggle room. The fact of the matter is that the draft ordinance that staff prepared was 100% compliant with the state, nothing less, nothing more. Some of the parking requirements, for example, that were mentioned here, and some of the restrictions that have been, we've been asked to add, would not comply with state law, and your staff here would not prepare a state, an ordinance that would not be compliant with state law. That's, and at the same time, that we had a number of people opposing the proposed ordinance, which was compliant with state law, we had others who asked us, on the other side of the spectrum, who wanted staff to propose a plan to put rent control on these units. When we had these two sides of the discussion being at two far ends, and the staff being so busy with rewriting the general plan, rewriting the zoning ordinance, and doing a number of other things with the limited staff that we have, we decided that at this point, we're going to not write an ordinance and simply implement the state ordinance as is until such a time that the city council might give us direction to write an ordinance that completely complies with state law, without really asking that we do anything more than the state law. At this point, we have not prepared an ordinance, we have prepared a draft ordinance that didn't make it to the city council, because of, again, the two opposing forces being so against one another, neither one of which is necessarily compliant 100% to state law. So, if council would like, we can prepare a very quick ordinance that will explain the state law in a way that's commensurate with the language of our code and bring it for council consideration. However, at this point, if there's going to be a request for a committee or a series of consensus-building meetings, unfortunately, we don't have the staff time at this point, because we're busy with the general plan and the zoning code. However, if there's not going to be consensus, and the council would like to wait until we can make consensus, we would simply implement the state law, and we use our own language as guideline. This is really the completion of my presentation. As to the details of the ordinance, Ms. Neil here next to me knows the ordinance very well, she has studied it with the city attorney's office, and she's discussed it with other people in, throughout the state, and we presented, we prepared our draft ordinance based on her research and her work that she did on this. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
You know, if, if she can present some of the main points of what the state law offers, as well as, I know there've been prior state laws, if you can also speak to kind of the evolution of the, of the state requirements in this area.
There've been three, three laws addressing granny flats, second units, and now accessory dwelling units. Each time, they get a new name. Originally, the granny flat units were designed for, specifically for families to house a relative, and they were allowed to do some regulation of requiring the person to be over 65. So, there were age requirements on those. The second set removed that requirement and just said it could be second dwelling units. It was just a second dwelling unit, anyone could live there. They did allow communities to do things like maintain someone in the home originally, and the homeowner could be required to live in the home, those kind of restrictions. This last version of it, that was recently adopted, is called the accessory dwelling units, and it's part of sort of a general attitude of the, of the state that housing is an incredibly important priority in this state. And. important priority in this state. And we know, yes, Santa Ana does have overcrowding. And so, it's an important priority to this council as well. And as a result of that, they recognized that many communities were not doing their fair share in terms of providing that housing. And so, they made it a by right unit. In our previous ordinance, we did require that, we did place limitations on secondary dwelling units. We required areas, particularly because we said we had very high densities in certain areas, and we had parks, and we had limited parks. And so, we regulated based on proximity to parks. The way that the current ordinance is written now, though, the current ordinance, the accessory dwelling unit that we're operating under the state, has an impact on us because the issue that they're talking about is parking, is that within a, okay, so within a transit area, a transit stop, which is a bus stop in our case, you do not have to require parking if you're within a half mile radius of it. And what happens in Santa Ana, because we are the, we have over half the transit bus stops in the county of Orange, and we have the top most well-used bus stops, most of our city is covered by that. So, individual units would not be required to meet the parking requirement. So, that's the concern that the neighborhood, that some of the neighborhood representatives have said. In terms of wiggle room, there is a provision in the state ordinance that says that if you can find immediate needs or make a study, that there are stretching service provisions. So, stretching service provisions. And what we would have to do to craft a law is we'd have to come up with some sort of study that said that we did have limitations to the service that could be provided. And then, any limitations that we would have would have to be directly linked to or supported by that study. So, that concludes staff's information, if you have any questions.
That's helpful. If you could maybe forward the state law, as well as, it sounds like you had a draft ordinance that at this point, you're not recommending forward. But if you could share that with our committee members, so we can review that on our own. I like the idea of not necessarily moving anything forward, but I am very interested in conducting those type of studies or findings to find areas where we may not have the services or the parking availabilities to do that. And, you know, I understand that, you know, we are short on staffs. It might be, maybe, you know, the hiring of an external contractor to look at that. And this also relates to an item that I've shared with our acting city manager and others, that I think we need to do a citywide parking needs assessment and parking management plan. I literally, on a daily basis, get complaints about parking issues. I mean, today, I literally have received, you know, three or four. Some of them are new, some of them are recurring. And I think, you know, one of the speakers had mentioned it too, doing this, the neighborhood by neighborhood or the street by street thing is just tough and time-consuming for individuals and leaders and staff and everybody else. I think, you know, it's time that we do something citywide. And I think some of that data probably would play into and be helpful with the type of research that the state is asking for in terms of variances. But also, you know, whether it be park services, whether it be police services, whether it be sewer services, water services, you know, most parts of our town are stretched pretty thin. But I understand how doing those studies is going to take time and resources. And so, we've got to figure that out. So, maybe at a future committee, we may address this again, or have individual meetings with neighborhood leaders and the staff about what that might be and the resource requirements. Because, you know, many portions of this city just weren't built for the number of people or the number of homes or individuals that we have, or the number of cars. And so, it's just a reality that I think most people acknowledge. And so, the addition of too many granny flats, if you will, is going to place an overwhelming burden on areas where, literally, we have, and I get reports on, you have day-to-day fights during the day, in the evenings, about who parks where, and can you park in front of my house, or don't put those cones out, or don't keep those trash cans out too long, et cetera, et cetera. And it's, I mean, people get hurt. And, you know, that leads to different forms of violence, or verbal situations, or lack of friendliness in neighborhoods. And it's not healthy. You know, you also have, you know, neighborhoods that aren't safe at night. Or you have, you know, young college students that come back late from college, or from a job, or whatnot. And, you know, I feel those calls and emails, and they're all true. And every call like that we get, really, it's a story representative of a hundred such example on any given month. So, I do take this issue very seriously and want to see how we can address this in a way that's not going to be burdensome on our neighborhoods.
I'd also like to add, thank you, I'd also like to add to that, that definitely parking is an issue here. We need to hire someone. Their sole job is to go and analyze the parking in the entire city, find out where we need it, and if possible, can we implement a permit parking area without having to ask the residents? Because a lot of them, you know, there's issues with the owners of the property not receiving the letter, that have to fill out and send it back because these people hide it, the renters. I'm not sure. This is just food for thought. I'm not saying, is there a way to just, we have to implement some kind of ordinance here, some kind of order, because there's just no parking. I go through it every day, by the way, in my neighborhood, every day. So, I'm one of those guys, that I understand there's a shortage. And I think the granny flats would, you know, add to that a little bit. I mean, we have to see exactly where that would be. It's just parking is such a tough issue right now. And I understand a lot of people, you know, they complain. They complain to me. They complain to Councilmember Solario. Been in many meetings with him. And that's one of the top complaints that we get is parking. I don't have to convince anyone here that they know that's an issue. So, we definitely need to continue this discussion.
Thank you very much. And I know this is an issue for another day. I don't know if the staff has any other points, but I think we're all just sharing insights. Share your insight, and then I'll share a concluding insight that I have.
I just would like to stress one thing. I think the idea of finding a shortage of services is a good one, and to hire a consultant to study that. But I need to emphasize that shortage of parking, the state law does not recognize that as a reason not to allow granny flats. This is other services that we would have to look at. Thank you.
Understood. Good point, well taken. But, yeah, we're stretched thin on services. So, yes, our Assistant City Attorney?
Mr. Chair, the action was to request direction on whether to continue to implement the state ordinance or adopt city standards. So, are the committee members tabling this action item for the next meeting?
I think I understood staff at saying they don't really have at least the recommendation to move a city drafted ordinance, and that we would fall under the state law for now. That does tell into a thought that I had, but maybe just tabling this for the next meeting may be appropriate for similar consideration. I think we might want to consider a moratorium on the establishment of new granny flats until this city takes a position on which route to go. But I know that, you know, there needs to be findings and other work related to that. And it's an initial timeframe, and then opportunities for continuances beyond that. So, I guess the initial question before we get too caught up into that question is if we table action on any direction today, what is the law of the land in terms of rights that folks would have?
We can't do a moratorium, but my understanding is if we table the item today, we will continue to implement the state ordinance and not adopt city standards at this time. And if that's the direction that the committee wants to go, we certainly can do that. But we cannot proceed with a moratorium.
We cannot proceed with the moratorium because?
I will allow staff to comment on that issue.
So, I have a question, then. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me get a response.
The state law addresses that. It's not land use. A moratorium has to be based on specific criteria, which say that there's a current threat to health and safety. And I believe that this law, that this law would not make those criteria.
And maybe today, we're not prepared to say that we can fulfill those findings. But I think I'd like staff to review and consider that as a potential option. Because if there is, in fact, some leeway in saying that certain findings may merit a moratorium, which, you know, the purpose of most moratoriums aren't to have an indefinite moratorium. It's to have the time to do additional research, to fine-tune your ordinance or do the findings and the research. So, you know, I do get this into that today, we don't feel we have those findings. But quite frankly, we haven't done that research. If there is leeway in the development of that, we ought to consider them. But, you know, today, we will not be making that recommendation as a formal recommendation. But I do expect, you know, the acting city manager, the office of the city attorney, and planning to look at what might be necessary for a moratorium, and what kind of time may be needed for the studies to suggest that we do have service shortages, because I do believe they do exist. But I understand that they take resources and documentation to do that. Councilmember Viegas?
So, the recommendation by the city attorney's office is to table the item and continue it to the future agenda of May 9th, 2017. And in the time being, the city will continue to implement the state ordinance.
And per Councilman Solario's request, we will prepare a memo to the committee members explaining the limitations of the law in terms of preparing an urgency ordinance to put a moratorium. And any other detailed information that comes out of tonight, we'll prepare a memo and we'll send it to the acting city manager, and to you, the committee members.
Very good. That's fair enough. Yes. I think there's another public comment. Please come forward, because I do want to encourage public member attendance. And while we would typically, you know, address this comment earlier, again, to encourage continued attendance and participation, I will allow it. But if you could please state your name and address, and after you speak, if you could fill out a card for our records.
I will. My name is Susan Vanderoust. I live at 1111 North Towner Street in Washington Square, Santa Ana, 92703. In the meantime, that we are now all living under SB 1069, and there is no protection for the citizens of Santa Ana that are concerned about the granny flats. As of 1-1, we are all living under the law. The ordinance does allow for some response by the city. But if there's no response by the city, we are all under the law. There's not, we can't do a moratorium. I totally support you, but it's not allowed. So, what kind of protection can the city provide to us, the residents, now that we, without any input, are living under the law that all the citizens of California are under? For the granny flats, that we now cannot have design constraints, size constraint can go up to 1,200 feet in someone's backyard, which are really large sized granny flats. If 50% of the existing dwelling size can now be put in the backyard, the city had an ordinance for granny flats that had stipulations. Now, we're under the state law. Something that really concerns us is the fact that in our neighborhood, Washington Square, another state law came through. A house burned. They didn't have the money to replace the house with a stick, you know, a 1920's house that burned down. And the city had to conform to state law, which now we have a double wide, sitting at 1108 North Baker. Manufactured housing, we call it a trailer because it looks like a double wide, but state calls it a manufactured home. This same type of construction is now allowed to go in the backyards of anybody that has the space to do it, which doesn't make much because it has taken away the setbacks. It doesn't conform to the old city rules that you had to protect us. I just would like some type of protection for us as citizens living in Santa Ana, highly dense. Property values around the double wide trailer that went in dropped about $20,000. This is not something that helps us.
Very good.
Thank you.
Your time is up. I do thank you for bringing that comment forward. I think you're hearing from us that, you know, at this point in time, you know, we're going to table this in any action from this committee until our next meeting, whether that be May 9th, or if it's agenda for an earlier meeting. But in the meantime, we will continue to do research and be mindful of the comments we received today. And I'm also big on best practices. So, if we hear of other cities that have good approaches to this, as well as if there are going to be studies on service limitations, you know, we've got to figure out what those might be, how much they might cost, timing, et cetera. So, this is a big issue, and we will definitely revisit the issue. And Councilmember Viegas agrees with that. So, that concludes that item. The next items are committee member comments and future agenda items. Let's go ahead and address those together. So, Councilmember Viegas? Any closing comments or items for the future?
Glad we were able to have the meeting early, as opposed to at a later date. And I see we have a lot of items to tackle. So, we're definitely going to be having some meetings other than the scheduled ones. And I'm glad we were able to get going today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viegas, for your interest. And I know today, or at prior discussions that some of us have had, we know that other items for the future. But I'll coordinate with staff on timing. We have, I think, the need to get an update on the city's graffiti program, costs, schedules, numerous issues related to the city's graffiti removal program, the need to have online crime stats data on the police department's website. We'll have continued presentations on the status of hiring in the police department, the homelessness crisis, the implementation of the marijuana measure BB, an update on MySantaAna, the app, because I think on the general, it works well. But I think I've heard concerns that maybe it's proprietary, or from one event or to another, it may not continue. Also, there's a need to discuss the crime prevention programs that the city does. I think there's some members of the public think that while we talk about our intervention and suppression, but I think we do do some crime prevention related to code enforcement, a number of other issues. I know there's ongoing thoughts and questions about fines and citations for different things. I know my family, we recently got a $63 ticket for a parking thing. I always tell my wife, consider that a donation to the city of Santa Ana. I said, don't feel bad about it. It'll be put to good use. But, you know, it'd be good to just kind of see side by side where we're at with fines and citations, and whether we need to make any adjustments, modifications, or increases. I would like an item regarding a non-emergency email or text feature that folks can use, similar to the phone feature that I described earlier. Definitely, we need to have a conversation about parking needs, assessment, and parking management plan citywide. management plan citywide. Uh, and then as a closing item, I do want to thank, uh, the chief, the acting city manager and everybody else that put together the presentations. Want to thank the attendees, especially all the neighborhood leaders. I want to continue to encourage the activity here at our regular council meetings as well. And I also ask that if you have any suggestions for future agenda items, that you email them to us or anybody that may be listening at home, if you have any items for this committee, that would be appreciated. And, uh, it's been with great honor that I think both, uh, Councilmember Vegas and I are part of the first, uh, public safety code enforcement and neighborhood empowerment council committee meeting. So, with that, thank you all and have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.